We're waiting for a quorum. There are seven as a quorum. I know there are a couple of members who are in a back room, side room. And we're closed, so we'll start in a few minutes. I'm calling order this meeting. This is a regular meeting of the Committee of the whole of the Council of the District of Columbia. I'm Phil Mendelson, Chairman of the Council and Chair of the Committee of the Whole. Today is Tuesday, October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. The time is twelve twenty-five in the afternoon. This meeting is being conducted in the Room five hundred, the Council Chambers of the Johnny Wilson Building. There is at least one member who's participating virtually. And this meeting is being broadcast live via the Zoom Video Conference Broadcast Platform, as well as on Council TV Channel thirteen. And I believe it is streaming on the Council's website, which is www.duccouncil.gov. This is a Committee of the Whole meeting. This meeting will be followed by a legislative meeting, which will be an additional legislative meeting, meaning it's not our regular first Tuesday of the month legislative meeting. There are approximately six bills to be marked up in the Committee of the Whole, for which there can be discussion and debate. There are two bills that have been moved out of the Judiciary Committee, and they will come through the Committee of the Whole for which members can ask questions, but there will not be debate. I believe all these measures are expected to be put on the agenda for the additional legislative meeting following this Committee of the Whole. We begin our Committee of the Whole meetings by determining there's a quorum. Mr. Cash, would you call the roll?
Chairman Mendelson.
Present.
Councilmember Allen.
Here.
Councilmember Bonds.
Here.
Councilmember Che.
Here.
Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Gray, Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Louis George.
Yeah.
Councilmember McDuffie.
Here.
Councilmember Nado.
Here.
Councilmember Pinto.
Present.
Councilmember Silverman. Councilmember Silverman. Councilmember Robert White.
Present.
Councilmember Tran White.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Cash. We have the Secretary's Report, which is a report of committee filings. I'm going to recognize the Chair Protem, Kenyon McDuffie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I will move to waive the reading of the Secretary's Report.
A motion to waive the reading of the report is their discussion. On the motion to waive the reading, all those in favor say aye.
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 Are there any no votes? Motion is carried unanimously. We have the reading of the Secretary's Log of Introductions and Referrals. This was circulated by the Secretary yesterday, I believe with the final agenda. Again, I'm going to recognize the Chair Protem, Councilmember Kenyon McDuffie.
And I will move to waive the reading of the Secretary's Log of Introductions and Referrals.
Is there a motion to waive the reading? Is there discussion? On the motion to waive the reading, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any no votes? The motion is carried unanimously. As I indicated, there are approximately six bills for markup in the Committee of the Whole. The first is Bill twenty-four dash twenty-four, entitled the Ruth Bader Ginsburg Way Designation Act of two thousand twenty-two. This legislation would symbolically designate Virginia Avenue between Rock Creek and Potomac Parkway Northwest and New Hampshire Avenue Northwest as Ruth Bader Ginsburg Way. Location is in Ward Two. Ruth Bader Ginsburg was appointed as a Judge of the United States Court of Appeals for the District of Columbia Circuit by President Jimmy Carter nineteen eighty. Ruth Ginsburg and her husband Martin Ginsburg purchased an apartment in the Watergate Residential Complex upon her confirmation. In nineteen ninety-three, President Bill Clinton nominated her as an Associate Justice of the Supreme Court, and she was approved by the Senate by a vote of ninety-three to three. Upon taking her seat on August tenth nineteen ninety-three, she became the second female justice and the first Jewish female justice on the court. Justice Ginsburg championed gender equality and fought for social justice under the law during her tenure on the Supreme Court. She authored the majority opinion in the United States versus Virginia in nineteen ninety-six, which struck down the all-male admissions policy at Virginia Military Institute. The joint Justice Kennedy's majority opinion overfell the hedges which granted same-sex couples the right to marry throughout the United States. She authored the dissent joined by three other justices in Shelby County v. Holder, a case which effectively gutted a law meant to bar racial discrimination in voting. She also led in the dissent of Ledbetter v. Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company in two thousand and seven, in which she criticized unequal pay for female employees. Justice Ginsburg cast away on September eighteenth, two thousand twenty. I'll add that the report says more about Ruth Bader Ginsburg, and of course, there's much, much more that could be said. But that's just a brief summary. This legislation was introduced by Councilmember Pinto with all other twelve council members co-introducing on January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. On November sixth, two thousand twenty-one, the Committee of the Whole held a hearing, public hearing, and the committee received no testimony or comments in opposition to this legislation. Without objection, I move both the print and report for with leave for staff to make technical conforming and editorial changes. Is there discussion? Councilmember Pinto.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ruth Bader Ginsburg was a pioneer in women's rights and gender equality and in her own right. Associate Justice Ginsburg received her BA from Cornell University, attended Harvard Law School, and as one of only a handful of women, received her LLB from Columbia Law School. She served as a law clerk at the United States District Court for the Southern District of New York, and then worked at the Columbia Law School Project on International Procedure. She was a professor of law at Rutgers University School of Law from nineteen sixty-three to nineteen seventy-two, and at Columbia Law School from nineteen seventy-two to nineteen eighty, where she became its first female tenured professor. Associate Justice Ginsburg was a fellow at the Center for Advanced Study in the Behavioral Sciences, Stanford, California, and she co-founded the Women's Rights Project of the American Civil Liberties Union, arguing over three hundred gender discrimination cases and six cases before the Supreme Court. She was appointed a Judge of the United States Court of Appeals for the District of Columbia Circuit in nineteen eighty, and President Clinton nominated her as an Associate Justice of the Supreme Court, taking her seat August tenth, nineteen ninety-three, thereby becoming the second female justice on the court in United States history. Associate Justice Ginsburg paved the way for many women in the legal field, as well as strengthened women's rights and gender equality throughout her storied career. Justice Ginsburg passed away on September eighteenth, two thousand twenty, and this designation will honor her long history of contributions to equality into our country. This legislation will symbolically designate the portion of Virginia Avenue Northwest between Rock Creek and Potomac Parkway Northwest and New Hampshire Avenue Northwest in Ward Two as Ruth Bader Ginsburg Way. Virginia Avenue Northwest was chosen for the designation as Associate Justice Ginsburg's home was in the Watergate Complex on that portion of Virginia Avenue. Last, current law does not permit a public space in the district to be named in honor of any living person or in honor of any person who has been deceased less than two years, unless the deceased person was a president or vice president of the United States, a United States Senator or Representative, a mayor of the District of Columbia, a member of the Council of the District of Columbia. This bill adds justices of the Supreme Court of the United States to this honored category for exceptions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Pinto. I do want to note that provision about adding Supreme Court justices is not in the committee print, but also Ruth Bader Ginsburg passed away more than two years ago, so. Councilmember Che.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm very pleased that the Council is doing this today. I had worked with Justice Ginsburg over the years in various commissions and so on, and as fellow law professors, we often were able to discuss issues that we both had great interest in. And as a teacher of constitutional law, I was always pleased when we got to that section involving gender discrimination, and I was able to take up cases that she authored. She was such a role model for women and an early role model for women. She once reminded me that when she was looking to go to a law school, they thought that she was there to apply to be on the staff as an assistant instead of a professor, and she encountered a similar kind of stereotypes and discrimination when she was thinking about working in the private sector as well. And I was deeply honored when she agreed to swear me in when I was first elected. She will be greatly missed in so many ways, but she's such an icon, and I think women can look to her example and be extremely proud and have the opportunity now to stand where they stand because of what she did early in her career and continued throughout. So I'm very, very pleased that we're doing this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilmember Che. Councilmember Pinto.
Just wanted to follow up on something you just said about the exception language not being included in the committee print. Yes, it has now been over two years since she passed away, but at the time that we introduced this, it had not, and so we were thinking that United States Supreme Court justices should be included in the under-two-year exception. Is there a reason that that piece of the expansion was excluded unrelated to Justice Ginsburg?
We didn't see a need to do it. And generally, I think the two-year law or rule has a has a rational purpose to it.
Okay.
And as I said, she passed away in two thousand twenty, and it's been more than two years, so. This doesn't come up very often, I have to say, with regard to Supreme Court justices and/or any of the others, in fact, is for the last ten years, I don't think we've had any of the qualifying individuals come before us for a ceremonial designation. And there are a few folks who I think I wouldn't want to give a ceremonial designation to, but that's a different issue. But that's a different issue. Is there any further discussion on this? The motion is on both the print and the report with leave for staff to make technical conforming and editorial changes. Mr. Cash, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Che.
Yes.
Councilmember Che votes yes. Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Gray is absent. Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson votes yes. Councilmember Louis George.
Yes.
Councilmember Louis George votes yes. Councilmember McDuffie.
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie votes yes. Chairman Mendelson.
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes yes. Councilmember Nado.
Yes.
Councilmember Nado votes yes. Councilmember Pinto.
Yes.
Councilmember Pinto votes yes. Councilmember Silverman.
Yes.
Councilmember Silverman votes yes. Councilmember Robert White. Yes. Councilmember Robert White votes yes. Councilmember Tran White.
Yes.
Councilmember Tran White votes yes. Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Allen votes yes. Councilmember Bonds.
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds votes yes. Mr. Chairman, there are twelve yeses and one absent.
Thank you, Mr. Cash. The motion that's to print report are approved unanimously. Madam General Counsel, or Assistant General Counsel, is the measure legally and technically sufficient for our consideration?
Yes, it is.
Madam Secretary, whom I cannot see on my screen, is the record complete?
Record will be complete after the here, sorry, after the committee report is filed.
I didn't hear a word you said. Could you repeat that?
Oh, no.
Yes, you're very faint. I heard you say, oh, no.
Once the committee report is filed.
Record will be complete when the committee report is filed.
Yes, sir.
Director, does the measure's fiscal impact statement comply with council requirements?
Yes, it does.
Without objection, this measure will be placed on the consent agenda for today's additional legislative meeting. The next measure for markup in the Committee of the Whole is Bill twenty-four dash one forty-two, entitled the Bedbug Control Act of two thousand twenty-two. This legislation was reported sequentially, first from the Committee on Health, chaired by Councilmember Vincent Gray, who is not here today, and then by the Committee of the Whole. That's the markup today. The print that we'll be voting on is the one that's attached to the Committee of the Whole report. As introduced, this legislation would propose to establish bedbug inspection requirements for contiguous units and establish a timeline for abatement, require housing providers to provide the bedbug infestation history for the previous sixteen months to a prospective tenant, require housing providers and licensed pest control professionals to report bedbug infestations abatement to the Department of Consumer Regulatory Affairs, and create a bedbug remediation assistance program to provide financial assistance for bedbug infestation abatement for low-income homeowners. The Committee on Health made a number of substantive changes to the introduced bill, including adding language that would allow tenants to terminate a lease if bedbugs were found within the first year of moving into the unit, requiring housing providers to accommodate the needs of tenants with disabilities or physical limitations for inspections and abatement, defining when a tenant may ask for an adjacent or adjoining property to be inspected, and amending reporting requirements. The Committee of the Whole print supports some of these changes, and then makes a number of additional substantive changes. First, the print strikes the Committee of the Whole print strikes the requirement for housing providers to disclose any infestations in the rental property within the last ten months. This is because the requirement is overly broad and burdensome. It would require housing providers to disclose the tenant's infestations that may have long ago been remediated, and also infestations in any unit on the property, not just the tenant's unit, our prospective tenant's unit. The print strikes language that would allow tenants to terminate a lease agreement without penalty if the tenant finds bedbugs in the unit within one year of signing. The print does not include that provision because the presence of bedbugs in a dwelling unit could be due to any number of factors outside the control of the housing provider or the tenant, including the tenant traveling internationally and inadvertently bringing bedbugs back with them. Allowing a tenant to terminate a lease agreement for something outside the control of the housing provider is somewhat unfair. The print adds a requirement for housing providers to implement reasonable bedbug monitoring services for a twelve-month period after a pest control professional determines that no evidence of bedbugs can be found in the unit. The print adds language stating that the tenant should notify a housing provider of a potential infestation within five days of suspecting or knowing of an infestation. The Committee of the Health print simply stated the tenant should promptly notify housing providers, and the Committee of the Whole print says, within five days. This notice requirement mirrors language in similar bedbug laws in Philadelphia and Chicago. The print also includes circumstances in which the housing provider may charge a tenant for the costs of inspections or eradication. There's no objection. I'll finish this presentation. These circumstances where the housing provider may do this are when the tenant knowingly interferes with, obstructs, or inhibits inspections or eradication measures, or when a tenant's failure to properly maintain their unit results in the need for repeated eradication efforts. The print also includes a requirement for pest control professionals to maintain records of inspections and eradication measures for a period of time. The print establishes a process to handle violations of the Act that was not in the introduced or the Committee of the Health prints. The Committee of the Whole print includes a requirement for the department, which would be the turn of buildings, to create and publish an educational pamphlet on bedbugs that must be given to a prospective tenant at the time they that they sign for a unit. And the print reduces the potential amount of financial assistance available to housing providers for inspections and eradications in a single unit through the remediation assistance fund, which is established by this bill, reduces it from ten thousand dollars to three thousand dollars. The average cost of eradication is between five hundred and twenty-five hundred dollars. Bedbugs negatively impact thousands of tenants in the District of Columbia each year. Despite this, there's no law requiring housing providers to maintain a bedbug-free premise, and therefore, no recourse for tenants who are exposed to bedbugs. Bill twenty-four dash one forty-two, the bill before us, will rectify this. The legislation was introduced a number of years ago by Councilmember Nado, and the Committee on Health and the Committee of the Whole held a public hearing on December nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. That was last council period. The bill was reintroduced on March first of two thousand twenty-one, again by Councilmember Nado, along with Councilmembers Gray, Che, and Pinto. The Committee on Health marked up the legislation on March eleventh of this year, and I am moving this for markup today. I move the print with leave for staff to make technical and conforming changes. Is there discussion?
Chairman.
Councilmember Nado.
Thank you. As you noted, I am one of the original movers of this, introducers of this legislation, so I do have some questions about changes made in the print. The print allows tenants to be charged for bedbug eradication when they knowingly interfere with, obstruct, or actively inhibit bedbug treatments and inspections. I'm curious how we are defining that, and my concern is we've seen landlords use the supposed failure to comply with pest inspections and treatment as a basis to file evictions for violating lease terms in the past somewhat prevalently. Is there any reason to think that wouldn't happen here with this change? I'm curious why we feel we need to do this.
The need to do this, the thinking was that since we're taking a holistic approach toward the problem with bedbugs, and that this is the first time that there will be legislation regarding this in the district, the thinking is that there are a number of responsibilities being placed on the housing provider or landlord. This bill makes clear, the law makes clear, that the landlord has to, when it's reported that there are bedbugs, has to undertake at the landlord's cost cleaning up the apartment, and if the, I shouldn't say cleaning up, but
Eradicating the bedbugs.
Yes, eradicating, and and there are penalties to the landlord if the landlord doesn't do that. But what if the tenant obstructs? Then then that's why we addressed that. What if the tenant obstructs? So I think the language, it's common language to say knowingly, knowingly interferes with, obstructs, or inhibits inspections or eradication measures. I'm reading from the committee report.
Yeah, I guess my concern is, is there any reason to think that this won't sort of become a default where the tenant gets charged? Maybe we could talk about it before first and second reading?
I'll just add this. We're unaware of any cases where that has happened. Of course, there hasn't been this law, but we're unaware of any such cases. And we also worked with a number of the housing advocates to, in the development or the changes in the committee print.
Yeah, and okay.
That's why we're comfortable with it.
We'll follow up with you because, yes, this hasn't been in place, so we don't know, but we have seen situations where tenants have gone so far as evicting people for failure to comply with inspections, so I don't know why we wouldn't worry that they would also just sort of de facto. Okay, I have two more, though, is.
If there's no objection, please.
So, under the version of this bill approved by the Committee on Health, landlords would be required to disclose to prospective tenants any bedbug infestation that occurred within the building, not just the unit available for rent within prior months, but the cow print requires the disclosure of infestations that have occurred only within the specific unit and only within a hundred twenty, only with the prior one hundred and twenty days. So it seems to, the print seems to conflict with the committee report, which notes that bedbugs can live for up to a year without feeding, and they're quite mobile. It's also inconsistent with the justification for the requirement that landlords monitor units for a year after eradication. So here's a question. Is the disclosure requirement in this committee print consistent with bedbug biology, and does it make sense to only require a hundred and twenty days of disclosure if we're requiring a year of monitoring?
So my staff knows more about the biology of bedbugs than I ever thought was possible. Yes, this is consistent with, I think that's the way you phrased it, bedbug biology. Let me say a little bit more. The bedbugs are are localized. When there are bedbugs in an apartment, they don't just spread to other apartments. They're focused because they're interested in the food, which is the humans. So that's why this speaks to the apartment where the infestation is. In addition, the, as I understand it, what my staff just said to me was that bedbugs can be eradicated in a matter of weeks. So the hundred and twenty days that we have in here goes beyond, well beyond that. But there is this monitoring requirement, so that there is that additional layer, which I would say is, in a sense, unnecessary, but does provide a little bit more, I'll say, assurance to the tenant. But they can be eradicated in a matter of weeks. In fact, I think actually in shorter time than that, but not to get too gross here, but, you know, eggs and some that may not have died right away, so that's why I've just said several weeks.
Okay, I would ask that we have a discussion about this between first and second reading, because my understanding is different. In fact, the impetus for this bill was actually a situation where bedbugs had spread from one home to another, not even apartment building, but between two row homes. And my understanding is that they can live for up to a year without feeding, so I just want to make sure that we are setting ourselves up with the new law to eradicate bedbugs rather, and make sure that we're not allowing any of these issues to persist. So my third question is.
Well, let me just say, I'm happy to talk to you after this, because Well, let me just say, I'm happy to talk to you um, yeah, after this because uh, the, my goal here is the same as your goal. We don't want.
Right.
Bedbugs.
Agreed. I don't want to have a long fight with you over bedbug legislation. I think we can sort it out, but I do want to raise questions.
About it if we do.
We could get, so, um. And then, as introduced, the legislation would have required landlords to respond to a tenant's report of bedbugs by conducting a pest control inspection within two business days. And it, the print um, extends it to ten business days, which could be at least two full weeks. My concern is. I, I don't know, what's the thinking around two weeks, ten days being an appropriate amount of time? Because they really do, I mean, they can spread between units, not. I mean, they may not go through walls, but there's a lot of ways for them to spread in an apartment building in that period of time.
Uh, the thinking was this, and I'm, again, I'm happy to work with you on this. The thinking was this. If we say it has to be within two, two days. Uh, it can be nearly impossible to get an exterminator to come out on such short notice. Uh, so it's more reasonable that to, it, it's reasonable to have a longer window to expect the exterminator to come out.
Okay.
Oh, that's the thinking.
Compromise on that somewhere.
I'm happy to talk with you about.
Great. Okay, thank you, Chairman. I appreciate you answering all my questions.
I think we're all getting to know more about bedbugs. Are there any other questions on this or discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Councilmember Bonds.
Um, thank you very much. I, I wanted to um, try and understand. How this print is going to facilitate the landlord having access to the units. Um, I know it says the landlord is going to make the request, but is there any muscle, any way for the landlord to actually have access to units? Maybe adjoining units, uh, because frequently tenants are not um, excited with someone wanting to come into their unit unless they. Are showing an infestation of bedbugs. I wondered. Is there some language within this print that would help us to understand how they would gain access?
Uh, the short answer is no, and this again is an issue we can look at between first and second reading, but I would say this. If a tenant calls the landlord and says, hey landlord, I got bedbugs, I want you to eradicate them. Implicitly, if not explicitly, the tenant is giving permission to the landlord to enter the unit. So I don't think there's a right of access uh, issue here, but uh, we can look at that.
I, I think it would be worthwhile, particularly since bedbugs do spread quickly. And they are spread from one, can spread from one unit to the other. And that's when we hear about, oh, my building has an infestation of bedbugs. And so. I just wanted to know, do we have any, any um, any, any way to make sure that the. Conditions in a, in a building can be eradicated uniformly so that, let's say, all on one floor. I mean. Are we within this print, you know, thinking about how we give the landlord the opportunity? To uh, eradicate in other units other than where the initial report came from.
Okay, and as I said, we'll look at it.
All right.
Anything further, Councilmember Bonds?
That's it. Thank you so much.
Any further questions or discussion? Uh, the vote is on the. Print with leave for staff to make technical and conforming changes. Mr. Cash, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Gray is absent. Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson votes yes. Councilmember Louis George. Councilmember Louis George. Councilmember McDuffie.
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie votes yes. Chairman Mendelson.
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes yes. Councilmember Nadeau.
Yes.
Councilmember Nadeau votes yes. Councilmember Pinto.
Yes.
Councilmember Pinto votes yes. Councilmember Silverman.
Yes.
Councilmember Silverman votes yes. Councilmember Robert White. Yes. Councilmember Robert White votes yes. Councilmember Tryon White.
Yes.
Councilmember Tryon White votes yes. Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Allen votes yes. Councilmember Bonds.
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds votes yes. Councilmember Che.
Yes.
Councilmember Che votes yes. Mr. Chairman, there are eleven yeses and two absent.
I thank you, Mr. Cash. The uh, print is approved unanimously. We have the report. I move the report with leave for staff to make technical, conforming, and editorial changes. Is there a discussion? Uh, by a voice vote, uh, done the re, on the report, all those in favor say aye, aye.
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 Are there any no votes? Uh, the report is approved unanimously. Madam Assistant General Counsel, is the measure legally and technically sufficient for our consideration?
Yes, it is.
Madam Secretary, is the record complete?
The record is complete from the Committee on Health and from the Committee of the Whole once the report is filed.
Once the report is filed. Madam Budget Director, does the measure's fiscal impact statement comply with council requirements?
Yes, it does.
And I'll note that the bill is subject, and I believe there is a subject to appropriation clause in it.
Correct.
The fiscal impact. Statement indicates a cost, I don't have it in front of me, something like one point four million a year.
Correct, one point four million in FY twenty-three and five point two million over the plan.
Yes. Um. Without objection, this measure will be placed on the consent agenda for today's additional legislative meeting. A third measure for markup. Is Bill twenty-four dash four-one-seven Theresa Howe Jones Way Designation Act of twenty twenty-two. The legislation. Would symbolically designate First Street Southwest between Martin Luther King Junior Avenue and Brandywine Street. All in Southwest as Theresa Howe Jones Way. Location is in Ward Eight. It's a symbolic naming. Which is for ceremonial purposes and shall be in addition to and subordinate to any name that is an official name. Teresa Jones was born in the district in nineteen thirty-three. She and her family were residents in public housing. Which led to her organizing her neighbors, making her a leader in her housing cooperative complex. Her formal community service began through her work as Executive Director of Southeast Neighborhood House. A major neighborhood organizing force during the Civil Rights and Black Power movements. She also served as an assistant branch chief. For the United Planning Organization, or UPO. She was a staunch home rule and statehood activist, having served as a delegate to the DC Statehood Constitutional Convention in nineteen eighty-two. Ms. Jones. Is well-known, or was well-known, as Commissioner and Chair of Advisory Neighborhood Commission eight D, and as a founding member of the Ward Eight Democrats. She was on the board of the Anacostia Neighborhood Museum and the Anacostia Economic Development Corporation. After she retired from the UPO, she took on initiatives such as the East of the River Needs Assessment Project, the Emergency Shelter Housing Program. The Neighborhood Market Survey, and the Crisis Intervention for Utility Payments. Ms. Jones passed away on June tenth, excuse me, July tenth, twenty seventeen. The legislation was introduced by Councilmember Tryon White, along with six other council members on October first, twenty twenty-one. The committee, the whole held a public hearing on the measure. On July sixth, twenty twenty-two, committee received no testimony. Or comments in opposition to the legislation. Without objection, I move both the print and the report. With leave for staff to make technical, conforming, and editorial changes. Is there a discussion? Mr. Cash, would you call the roll? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson votes yes. Councilmember Louis George. Councilmember Louis George, Councilmember McDuffie.
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie votes yes. Chairman Mendelson.
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes yes. Councilmember Nadeau.
Yes.
Councilmember Nadeau votes yes. Councilmember Pinto.
Yes.
Councilmember Pinto votes yes. Councilmember Silverman.
Yes.
Councilmember Silverman votes yes. Councilmember Robert White. Councilmember Robert White. Councilmember Tryon White.
Yes.
Councilmember Tryon White votes yes. Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Allen votes yes. Councilmember Bonds.
Yes.
Bonds votes yes. Councilmember Che.
Yes.
Councilmember Che votes yes. And Councilmember Gray is absent. Mr. Chairman, there are ten yeses and three absent.
Uh, the um, motion, which is both the print and report. Are approved unanimously. Madam Assistant General Counsel, is the measure legally and technically sufficient for our consideration?
Yes, it is.
Madam Secretary, is the record complete? You were completely muted, but I believe you said once the report is filed.
I'll try this again, once the report is filed.
Thank you. Madam Budget Director, does the measure's fiscal impact statement comply with council requirements?
Yes, it does.
Without objection, this measure will be placed on the consent agenda for today's. Additional legislative meeting. The next item for markup is Bill twenty-four dash five-two-six Engineering Licenseur Amendment Act of twenty twenty-two. Uh, this legislation was introduced by myself and Councilmember Mary Che. Uh, as introduced, the bill amends the law to clarify the scope of the practice of engineering with respect to consultants, officers, or employees of the district government. Or employees, consultants, officers of an independent agency, the District of Columbia. And the bill makes conforming amendment to another provision in the code. The practice of engineering was not regulated in the district until nineteen fifty, when Congress. Adopted the Professional Engineers Registration Act. That legislation. Uh, did provide for exemptions, and the exemptions were for officers or employees of the Government of the United States or the Government of the District of Columbia. And also an exemption. For the practice of engineering exclusively as an officer or employee of a public utility corporation. These provisions, these exemptions remained in the law until the council approved. Bill twenty-one dash two seventy-nine, the Professional Engineers Licenseur and Regulation Clarification Amendment Act of twenty sixteen. That legislation in twenty sixteen repealed all of the provisions of the Congressional Act from nineteen fifty codified. I won't give the codification here. But that included in the repeal the exempt exemptions. For district employees. Despite being the law in late twenty sixteen, the Department of Consumer Regulatory Affairs did not enforce the requirement for government employees practicing engineering to be licensed until twenty twenty-one. Due to the negative impacts that enforcement could have on multiple projects at district independent agencies. This council adopted emergency legislation in this council period. I believe in twenty twenty-one to add an exemption to put back in the exemption, an exemption. An exemption for persons acting as a consultant, officer, employee of the government of, or an independent agency of the District of Columbia. Acting under the supervision of a professional engineer. Uh, that emergency legislation was the impetus for the bill that's before us. Uh, the bill that's before, the print that's before us. Does make some changes, and I want to note this, it establishes reciprocity for individuals licensed in states with similar or higher eligibility requirements. It also, um, let me see, the print. Pro, exempts. Exempts, quote, persons acting as a consultant, officer, employee of the government, or an independent agency, the District of Columbia. Or to a graduate. Of a program accredited by the Accreditation Board for Engineering and Technology, or another accreditation entity that is acceptable to the Board of Professional Engineers. While under the responsible charge of a professional engineer, unquote. Well, not too different from the emergency legislation and temporary that we previously adopted. For decades, engineering licensure laws in the district exempted government employees or officers and employees at independent agencies. Exempted them from having to obtain a professional engineering license to engage in the practice of engineering. The committee print. Uh, restores. That exemption with some improvements, refinements, um, that had been repealed in twenty sixteen. The legislation was introduced, the permanent bill was introduced November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. The committee, the whole held a public hearing on April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. And we have worked with various agencies as well as others who are very much. Involved in the engineering business to try to make sure that we have the print correct. With that, I will move the print with leave for staff to make technical and conforming changes. Is there a discussion? Uh, Mr. Cash, would you call the roll? The vote is on the print.
Councilmember Louis George. Councilmember Louis George, Councilmember McDuffie.
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie votes yes. Chairman Mendelson.
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes yes. Councilmember Nadeau.
Yes.
Councilmember Nadeau votes yes. Councilmember Pinto.
Yes.
Councilmember Pinto votes yes. Councilmember Silverman.
Yes.
Councilmember Silverman votes yes. Councilmember Robert White. Yes. Councilmember Robert White votes yes. Councilmember Tryon White.
Yes.
Councilmember Tryon White votes yes. Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Allen votes yes. Councilmember Bonds.
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds votes yes. Councilmember Che.
Yes.
Councilmember Che votes yes. Councilmember Gray is absent. Councilmember Henderson.
Um, I'm speaking slowly to give my colleague an opportunity to come back. So I'm voting yes, but can we, um. What is the rule? Can we? Wait, uh. Okay, yes.
Councilmember Henderson votes yes. Councilmember Louis George.
Yes.
Councilmember Louis George votes yes. Mr. Chairman, there are twelve yeses and one absent.
Uh, the um, print is approved unanimously. Councilmember Henderson, were you saying that you were trying to speak slowly to give time for a colleague to return?
That is correct.
Because the rules do provide for what we call a two-minute rule.
That's right, but we didn't need it.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um. We have, the uh, the print is approved unanimously. We have the report. I move the report with leave for staff to make technical, conforming, and editorial changes. Is there a discussion? The vote is on the report. All those in favor say aye, aye.
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 Any opposed? The uh, report is approved unanimously. Um, General Counsel, is the measure legally and technically, Madam Assistant General Counsel, is the measure legally and technically sufficient for our consideration?
Yes, it is.
Madam Secretary, is the record complete?
Once the report is filed.
Madam Budget Director, does the measure's fiscal impact statement comply with council requirements?
Yes, it does.
And I believe there's no fiscal impact.
Correct.
As in no cost. Uh, without objection, this measure will be placed on the consent agenda for today's additional legislative meeting. The next measure for consideration is Bill twenty-four dash seven thirty-six. Entitled the Wilhelmina and Calvin Rolark Way Symbolic Street Designation Act of twenty twenty-two. This legislation would symbolically designate the five hundred block of Fox Hall Place Southeast. As Wilhelmina and Calvin Rolark Way. Location is in Ward Eight. A symbolic naming is for ceremonial purposes and shall be in addition to and subordinate to any names as an official name. Wilhelmina Jackson was born in Portsmouth, Virginia. Following her graduation from high school, she attended Howard University. Graduated from the Robert H. Terrell Law School in nineteen forty-four and opened her own private law practice in nineteen forty-seven. Wilhelmina Jackson met Calvin Rolark in nineteen sixty, and the two married in nineteen sixty-three. Wilhelmina and Calvin Rolark were inseparable in life and worked in tandem to improve the lives of the poor and disadvantaged in the District of Columbia. Mr. Rolark. Had established the newspaper, The Washington Farmer, a weekly newspaper serving the African-American community. In nineteen sixty-nine, the Rolarks founded the United Black Fund of Greater Washington. To serve the unmet needs of mostly small and struggling black and Latino nonprofits which were not served by what would become the United Way. In nineteen seventy-six, Wilhelmina Rolark was elected to the Ward Eight seat on the Council of the District of Columbia. The second person to hold the position. And she would serve four consecutive terms through nineteen ninety-two. Uh, the report doesn't note this, but uh, I will note that a couple of measures that uh. She authored and put through the council were to um, establish the police cadet program. I believe at the time was both police and fire. Cadet program, or it is today. I think that's what she established. Which uh, we have um, really come to rely on here as an important part of recruiting local. Youth into our uh. Um, sworn services for public safety. Another accomplishment was uh, that uh. It was her legislation that eliminated money bond. In the District of Columbia for criminal charges. So only in the very, very rarest of circumstances is an individual, when they're arrested in the district, required to post bail. This has been um, the practice in the district for decades since Councilmember Rolark. Uh, got that legislation to the council, and I note that it is touted as a reform that other jurisdictions have been struggling with for years. Because they recognized that um, money bond can be very unfair and discriminatory. And uh, that is part of her legacy here. Both Wilhelmina and Calvin Rolark worked tirelessly to make the district and especially Ward Eight a better place to live and to work for residents. Calvin Rolark unexpectedly passed away in October nineteen ninety-four, and Wilhelmina Rolark passed away in February of two thousand and six. This legislation was introduced by myself and Councilmember Tryon White in March, March twenty-ninth of this year, and the committee, the whole held a public hearing on July sixth of this year. The committees received no testimony or comments in opposition to the legislation. Without objection, I move both the print and report with leave for staff to make technical conforming and editorial changes. Is there discussion?
Yes, Chairman.
Councilmember White.
Just wanted to concur the comments you made about Wilhelmina Rolack and also TJ, also known as Teresa Jones, who was strong black woman in Ward Eight that set precedence for leadership in our city. I do want to note that Calvin and Wilhelmina Rolack were known as the power couple in Ward Eight during their time. They spent their leadership across the city. It's important to honor these residents, community advocates. Ward Eight communities in the District of Columbia have benefited deeply from their tireless work, as you mentioned just now. It is a great honor to have introduced this legislation alongside with you, Chairman, for the five hundred block of Fox Hall Place Southeast. And, and for the record, Chairman, I don't see my Cardell Shelton legislation listed, but I guess we'll figure it out in the next couple of minutes, but thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember White. I'll note a couple of things. One is we will include your remarks and support for this legislation in the committee report. With regard to Cardell Shelton, that legislation is pending, and we are looking to mark it up, but your office might be helpful to us with providing some biographical information, if you could.
Yep.
Is there any further discussion? The vote will be on the, both the print and report with leave for staff. Mr. Cash, would you call the roll?
Councilmember McDuffie.
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie votes yes. Chairman Mendelson.
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes yes. Councilmember Nadeau.
Yes.
Councilmember Nadeau votes yes. Councilmember Pinto.
Yes.
Councilmember Pinto votes yes. Councilmember Silverman.
Yes.
Councilmember Silverman votes yes. Councilmember Robert White.
Yes.
Councilmember Robert White votes yes. Councilmember Tryon White.
Yes.
Councilmember Tryon White votes yes. Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Allen votes yes. Councilmember Bonds.
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds votes yes. Councilmember Che.
Yes.
Councilmember Che votes yes. Councilmember Gray is absent. Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson votes yes. Councilmember Lewis George.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis George votes yes. Mr. Chairman, there are twelve yeses, one absent.
The print report are approved unanimously. Madam General, Assistant General Counsel, is the measure legally and technically sufficient for our consideration?
Yes, it is.
I'm Secretary. Is record complete?
Once the report is filed.
Madam Budget Director, does the measure's fiscal impact statement comply with council requirements?
Yes, it does.
Which is that there's no fiscal impact.
Correct.
Without objection, this measure will be placed on the consent agenda for today's additional legislation, additional legislative meeting. The last item for markup in the committee, the whole, is PR twenty-four dash eight-one-four, Sense of the Council on the Stoddard Elementary Addition Resolution of two thousand and twenty-two. The purpose of this resolution is to express the sense of the council with regard to the commute and feeder pattern for a new Fox Hall Elementary School and the future expansion of Stoddard Elementary School. I am not going to read much from the committee report. I'm going to go straight to the print, and my motion is going to be on both the print and report, and I'm going to make one change to the, to the print, which I'll explain in a moment. So the resolution in Section Three says it is the sense of the council that when establishing the catchment area for the new elementary school in Fox Hall Village, D C, D C Public Schools, D C P S should endeavor to ensure that no family assigned to the new school has a longer commute to school than they would if remaining in bounds for their current school. I repeat, should endeavor to ensure. Paragraph two, the new elementary school in Fox Hall Village is located such that it cannot accommodate Glover Park families as the new school is not reasonably accessible from Glover Park. And three, the Stoddard Edition must be built in such a way that an additional story can be added when future enrollment requires it, and D C P S should begin planning for this additional story during the school year in which Stoddard's enrollment meets or exceeds eighty-five percent of its permanent capacity. That's the essence of this sense of the council. In what I read, I omitted words on line thirteen or other families within Stoddard's current catchment area. I'll repeat that that paragraph two is the new elementary school in Fox Hall Village is located such that it cannot accommodate Glover Park families as the new school is not reasonably accessible from Glover Park. I'm going to say a little bit more. This is a sense of the council resolution, so it's not binding, but it does express a position of the council. I will also add that the council, this council, in the budget that we adopted earlier this year in the capital improvement plan, explicitly added that the Stoddard Edition must be built in such a way that an additional story can be added when future enrollment requires it. So we're sort of reiterating what we've already put in the budget with that. I will add as well, I had said this at our meeting, our breakfast meeting this morning, I'll just note for the record, does not include breakfast, that the geography of Glover Park is such, and this is just a part of this Stoddard Elementary School catchment area. The geography of Glover Park is such that the only way to get the Fox Hall Road is to either leave Glover Park and basically go over to Wisconsin Avenue and go down the Reservoir Road, or go up to Tunlaw Road, or to cut through the park. And the park is a large park, Glover Archfort Park, a very large park, and it's unreasonable to expect that elementary school kids on their own will be traversing that park. And it's sort of unreasonable to expect that parents would be traversing that park. And it's kind of unreasonable to expect that parents would get in their cars with their kids, and a lot of kids in Glover Park, a lot of parents in Glover Park, given that its townhouses may not have cars, but to expect that they're all going to get in their cars and go drive east in order to get across the park. So that's why I'm supportive of this resolution and putting it forward. I move the print and, if there's no objection, I move both the print and report. The print, as I noted, the change, and with leave for staff to make technical conforming and editorial changes. Is there discussion on this? Councilmember Che and then Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. The resolution here simply reflects the concerns that include the following, that the Fox Hall School is not easily accessible from Glover Park, that D C P S should do all it can to ensure current Stoddard students do not see an increased commute to school following construction of the Fox Hall School, and that the new addition at Stoddard be designed to support a future third story. And it's my hope that the mayor's future planning will be informed by this resolution. Last, I want to note that this resolution should not be taken to suggest that only Ward Three schools face overcrowding or deserve a focus of this kind from the council. Certainly, schools in our wards face the same issues around the district. Rather, the resolution intends to highlight specific unaddressed issues at one particular school and provide a clear statement on how this body would see those issues addressed for that school community. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilmember Che. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I raised this in the breakfast, and I appreciate that you are making some adjustments here for those in the room who probably haven't looked at this. The original resolution essentially called for the council to say that the existing boundaries of Stoddard Elementary should stay the way they are, and I felt that that was unwise considering we are, well, number one, we just funded D C P S and the Deputy Mayor for Education to do another school assignment boundary process, which would be approximately ten years after the other. And D C P S should be given the opportunity to make those considerations using the data in, in terms of where boundaries are drawn or not, without the council saying that one specific school's boundary should not change. While, and, and my feeling there was that, what is to stop, well, I understand where Councilmember Che is coming from as a representative for Ward Three, there's nothing to stop any of the Ward Council members from also introducing similar resolutions for their particular elementary schools, middle schools, high schools, et cetera. And I feel like we're heading down a slippery slope of doing school assignment boundary policies from the dais without the process being afforded to us. Beyond that, though, while we're on the topic, I think that, and I sort of asked this offhand, I do think D C P S needs to then consider why are we even building this new elementary school if we are going to decide, I, I recognize that Key Elementary School is overcrowded, and that was the purpose for driving this, but if we are to say that none of the students can come from the neighboring school boundary, then where are the children supposed to come? And I feel like we need to figure that out before we spend a hundred million dollars to build a new school that no one is going to attend. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, I, I appreciate the change that you've made. I, I still am planning to vote no on this, but my colleagues should take their however they wish, just because I feel like we shouldn't necessarily be doing it for one specific school. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Silverman?
Mr. Chairman, I actually toured Stoddard in the school readiness tours, the famed Councilmember Che school readiness tours. And, you know, for those who are not familiar, there are a number of portable classrooms around the school that, that take up, I think, almost all of the parking lot. So I, I say that to say it's clear that there needs to be an addition and that there are overcrowding issues. But that, but I also want to recognize, I think, what Councilmember Henderson brought up in the breakfast. It's highly unusual to do a sense of the council like this for a specific school. And it was mentioned that there are geographic issues, but I will just say that, you know, I appreciate Councilmember, since Councilmember Henderson's point, there are safe passages issues with a lot of our schools. Perhaps it's not the geographic boundary of a park, but it is safe passage to school, and I hope that if there are similar perhaps parallel issues, I'll say that we give the same consideration that we're giving here to Stoddard today. I will be voting yes, but I do think this is a bit unusual. And I appreciate Councilmember Che's comments that she made at the end of her remarks addressing this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Silverman. Further discussion? I'm just going to add a little bit more. So I, I totally understand the concern about whether we're going to start doing this piecemeal with different schools. I think that the situation with Stoddard and the change I made just now to the resolution clarifies this is specific to a geographical situation. And the reason I see a need to for the council to speak to this is because the executive for the past two years has been really deaf to a community that has said that the geographical, you know, Glover Park is geographically locked in. And that situation doesn't apply in too many other circumstances. I certainly think there needs to be flexibility with the boundaries, and the change I made allows for that on all sides except for the southern and western sides of Glover Park, which are landlocked. I mean, it's a large park. It's somewhat analogous to a situation, I believe it was earlier this year, the month run together, it might have been last year, where the D C P S, where the government purchased the old Military Road School and decided they was going to send all the preschool kids from, that were at Lafayette over to Military Road School, and the community said, no, I mean, really, we're going to have preschool, pre-K kids going across Rock Creek Park. Now, that's with family, at least with parents, presumably, they're not walking that distance. But it was the same, somewhat the same situation, Rock Creek Park is a geographic boundary, and so sometimes the district government isn't getting it, and this, the resolution says, hey, here, that boundary means, that boundary is real, and and so you need to stop thinking about building a new school that is going to require that kids have to traverse a park. That's really what this does. I think that's unique, and I would add this as well for those who are concerned. I mean, I worked with colleagues here to put in the budget, the Budget Support Act, a requirement for boundary study. There needs to be a boundary study. There is a significant problem in the city with over enrollment in number of schools and under enrollment in number of schools, and the city has not seriously addressed the boundary issue for our schools, and it's not going to be easy or politically easy when we get there, but that needs to be done, and I fully support that. And if there is legislation that starts to piecemeal individual schools and their boundaries, I will make sure they get referred to the committee, the whole, than simply being retained so that there can be a more careful look at that legislation. It looks like I've managed to provoke more comment. Councilmember Lewis George?
Yeah, I, I just, I think we should go through the process here because there are a number, I understand this is a special circumstances, but remember, last year, we had overcrowding issues in Ward Four schools. We still have overcrowding issues. Lafayette Elementary, just the same as an overcrowded school. We just addressed Roosevelt's utilization. Coolidge Wells are going to have utilization issues, and while I would want to address them in the same manner, I think I also have to let, we also have to just let the process play out here and go about it the right way. So I, I don't think we should be putting ourselves, even though it's just a sense of the council, I don't think we should be taking this step for today.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, the vote is on both the print and report. The vote is on both the print and report with leave for staff, make technical conforming and editorial changes, and the print reflects the change that I noted, and because this is a sense of the council, I think we can do this by a voice vote. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No.
I believe Councilmember Lewis George and Councilmember Henderson want to be recorded as voting no.
Correct.
The
Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to be recorded as voting present. This is Nadeau. Sorry, we've all got masks on.
Yes. Okay. The motion is approved unanimously. Excuse me, not, the motion is approved. The council members are recorded as voting no, and Councilmember Nadeau is recorded as present. I'm Assistant General Counsel. Is the measure legally and technically sufficient for our consideration?
Yes, it is.
I'm Secretary. Is record complete?
Once the hearing record and report are filed.
Madam Budget Director, does the measure's fiscal impact statement comply with council requirements?
Yes, it does.
Is there a fiscal impact statement?
No, it's, it's a sense of, oh, there is, there are no fiscal impact statements written on sense of the council resolutions.
Okay, so the non-existent fiscal impact statement does comply with the council requirements, that there doesn't need to be one.
Correct.
Without objection, is this on the consent or non-consent agenda? Without objection, this will be on the consent agenda for today's additional meeting. We have two measures from other committees. Bill twenty-four dash one-twenty-five Expedited Adoption Eligibility Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-two, reported out of the Committee on Judiciary and Public Safety chaired by Councilmember Charis Allen. Mr. Allen?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Bill twenty-four dash one-two-five, the Expedited Adoption Eligibility Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-two was introduced by you on March first, two thousand and twenty-one. The bill was referred to the committee the next day, and the committee held a hearing on March eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, and was unanimously approved at an additional meeting on October eleventh. The committee print creates an expedited adoption proceeding for LGBTQ parents who use assisted reproductive technology to have a child. The current adoption process meant for the adoption of children with no biological relationship to either adoptive parent like an older foster child, subjects these LGBTQ parents to an overly burdensome process that is unnecessarily long, expensive, demanding of superfluous information and procedures, and ultimately, it's inequitable. These unnecessary procedures include a home study, criminal background checks, and at times, a court hearing. In today's climate, LGBTQ rights are increasingly coming under attack. Some states across the country have taken steps to ban gender-affirming care, restrict participation by transgender students in school sports, and allow denial of services to LGBTQ people based on religious or moral objections. The committee print would ease the logistical and financial burdens on LGBTQ parents merely looking to confirm their parentage of their child and establish the legal protection. on LGBTQ parents merely looking to confirm their parentage of their child and establish the legal protections that come with it. The benefits of establishing parentage of a child conceived through assisted reproductive technology extend beyond the district. Given that the Constitution's full faith and credit clause requires courts in other states to recognize valid judgments and orders made by a court in another state, families can rest assured under this bill that their rights will be upheld and recognized should they decide to move to another jurisdiction. This is an important step in making sure that our legal system evolves with technology. I especially want to thank the LGBTQ family lawyers who supported this bill and for their advocacy and all the public witnesses that testified about how this would impact their families at our hearing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd request this bill be added to the consent agenda for the legislative meeting to follow.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Allen. Uh, this is before us for questions and clearance. Are there any questions from members regarding the bill? Man, Assistant General Counsel, is the measure legally and technically sufficient for our consideration?
Yes, it is.
Um, Secretary's record complete?
Yes, it is.
Man, Budget Director, does the measure fiscal impact statement comply with council requirements?
Yes, it does.
Is there a fiscal impact?
No, there is not.
Objection, this measure will be placed on the consent agenda for today's additional legislative meeting. Final item is Bill twenty-four dash nine twenty-five, also from the committee on judiciary and public safety, Business Records Efficiency Act of twenty twenty-two. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Bill twenty-four dash nine two five, the Business Records Efficiency Act of twenty twenty-two was introduced on July fifth, twenty twenty-two by you at the request of Attorney General Carl Racine. The bill was referred to the committee on July twelfth, twenty twenty-two, and the committee held a hearing on the bill on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, and it was unanimously approved in an additional meeting on October eleventh. The purpose of Bill twenty-four dash nine two five is to make a small but impactful change to the district's evidence laws. The bill would allow a party seeking to introduce a business record into evidence in either civil or criminal trial to authenticate the record or prove that it is what it purports to be through a written declaration made under oath and subject to the penalty of perjury by a custodian of records. A business record includes documents such as bank, phone, or medical records that are just made in the ordinary course of business. Currently, litigants are required to call a physical person to the witness stand at trial to authenticate that a business record is a business record, often from outside the district, thereby needlessly consuming resources and valuable court and juror time. For example, to introduce a Verizon phone bill into evidence, it's now necessary to call a Verizon employee to the stand. This would permit the parties to use a written declaration instead, which is commonly done in other jurisdictions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd request this bill be added to the consent agenda for the legislative meeting to follow.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Are there questions from members? Man, Assistant General Counsel, is the measure legally and technically sufficient for our consideration?
Yes, it is.
Um, Secretary, is the record complete?
Yes, it is.
Man, Budget Director, does the measure fiscal impact statement comply with council requirements?
Yes, it does, and it is not, uh, subject to appropriations.
And does it have a fiscal?
I mean, excuse me, it does not have a fiscal impact.
Thank you. Uh, without objection, this measure will be placed on the consent agenda for today's additional legislative meeting. That's going to conclude the items for this committee, the whole meeting. The we have a legis, an additional legislative meeting to follow. And the, uh, following that, the next legislative meeting, which will be a regular meeting, will be November first. And I'm reasonably certain that we will have an additional legislative, excuse me, additional committee, the whole meeting on November first. The time is one thirty-five. Uh, actually, before I adjourn us, um, we will try to start the legislative meeting at two o'clock. The time is one thirty-five and this meeting's adjourned.
Just when
Are we ready? I'm calling to this meeting. This is an additional meeting of the Committee of the whole of the Council of the District of Columbia. I'm Phil Mendelson, Chairman of the Council. Today is Tuesday, October 18th, 2022. The time is 2:37 in the afternoon. This meeting is being held in the Council Chambers Room 500 of the Johnny Wilson Building, although it is what we call a hybrid meeting because I believe at least one council member is participating virtually. This meeting also is being broadcast live via the Zoom Video Conference Broadcast Platform, live on Council Channel 13 Cable Television, and I believe is streaming on the Council's website, www.dc council dot com. This is the 37th Legislative Meeting of Council Period 24. As I said, it was an additional meeting. It's not our regularly scheduled meeting. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be November 1st. We always begin our legislative meetings with a moment of silence. I would ask that members on the dais respect that as well as members in the audience. It's a moment of reflection and however one wants to observe a moment of silence. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Hopefully you can hear me, Mr. Chairman. Councilmember Allen?
I can hear loud and clear. I'm here.
Thank you. Councilmember Bonds? Councilmember Bonds? Councilmember Che?
Here.
Councilmember Gray? Councilmember Gray? Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Louis George?
Here.
Councilmember McDuffie?
Here.
Chairman Mendelson?
Present.
Councilmember Nadeau?
Here.
Councilmember Pinto?
Present.
Councilmember Silverman?
Present.
Councilmember Robert White?
Present.
Councilmember Trayon White?
Present.
Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We have the consent agenda before us. The consent agenda is, I believe, the first four pages of the agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda? I'm not hearing any changes. I'll ask the secretary to call the roll. The vote is on the consent agenda.
Councilmember Robert White?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah. Oh, yes. Thank you. On the consent agenda. Thank you. Yes.
Councilmember Robert White votes yes. Councilmember Trayon White?
Yes.
Councilmember Trayon White votes yes. Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen votes yes. Councilmember Bonds? Councilmember Bonds? Councilmember Che?
Yes.
Councilmember Che votes yes. Councilmember Gray? Councilmember Gray? Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson votes yes. Councilmember Louis George?
Yes.
Councilmember Louis George votes yes. Councilmember McDuffie?
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie votes yes. Chairman Mendelson?
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes yes. Councilmember Nadeau?
Yes.
Councilmember Nadeau votes yes. Councilmember Pinto?
Yes.
Councilmember Pinto votes yes. Councilmember Silverman?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverman votes yes. Mr. Chairman, there are 11 yeses and two absences. Wait, no. Mr. Chairman? Hang on one second. Councilmember Bonds?
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds?
Yes. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Bonds votes yes. Chairman, there are 12 yeses and one absent.
The, thank you, Madam Secretary. The consent agenda is approved unanimously. That takes us to the non-consent agenda. We have a final reading on Bill 24-507, the Elections Modernization Amendment Act of 2022. And there will be an amendment. I'm going to recognize and show the Judiciary Committee, Councilmember Allen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. The council voted unanimously in favor of Bill 24-507, the last legislative meeting today. I'd like to move a clarifying amendment, which was circulated yesterday morning to members. The amendment just clarifies that the Board of Elections is required to mail ballots to all eligible registered voters in special elections to recall elected officers. The committee print includes a provision that requires the Board to mail every registered qualified elector a mail-in ballot postage paid prior to any board run election. Recall elections, including the recall to recall advisory neighborhood commissioners, are run by the Board and therefore should be included in this requirement. So to make this clear, this amendment strikes language and current law that allowed the Board to use mail voting for ANC recall elections but did not require it. The amendment also allows the Board to decide the number and location of vote centers and ballot drop boxes used for recall elections as the current requirements for the primary and general elections wouldn't make sense for those limited purpose elections. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With that, I move that amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. We have the amendment before us. I said it with some hesitation because I didn't turn to my papers. I think we can handle the amendment this way. If there's no objection, the amendment will be accepted. Is there objection to the amendment? I'm not hearing any objection. The amendment is accepted.
Thank you.
Mr. Allen?
And so moved on the underlying, Mr. Chair.
I think you already moved it because.
I think I've moved the amendments now that it's been accepted. Now I'll move the underlying.
Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, would you call the roll? The vote is on Bill 24-507 as amended.
Councilmember Trayon White?
Yes.
Councilmember Trayon White votes yes. Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen votes yes. Councilmember Bonds?
Yes.
Votes yes. Councilmember Che?
Yes.
Councilmember Che votes yes. Councilmember Gray is absent. Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson votes yes. Councilmember Louis George?
Yes.
Councilmember Louis George votes yes. Councilmember McDuffie?
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie votes yes. Chairman Mendelson?
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes yes. Councilmember Nadeau?
Yes.
Councilmember Nadeau votes yes. Councilmember Pinto?
Yes.
Councilmember Pinto votes yes. Councilmember Silverman?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverman votes yes. And Councilmember Robert White?
Yes.
Councilmember Robert White votes yes. Mr. Chairman, there are 12 yeses and one absent.
The bill as amended is approved unanimously. I will turn to emergency legislation. We have, I believe, we have six emergency measures proposed by council members, and then we will turn to emergency legislation proposed by the mayor. The first is Attorney General Civil Rights Enforcement Second Emergency Amendment Act. We have the Declaration first, PR 24-975. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. On January 4th, 2022, the council passed the Attorney General Civil Rights Enforcement Emergency Amendment Act of 2022, which expired on May 2nd, 2022. And on February 1st, 2022, the council passed the Attorney General Civil Rights Enforcement Temporary Amendment Act of 2022. Temporary law is set to expire on November 19th, 2022. This second round of emergency and temporary legislation is now necessary to prevent a gap in the law between the expiration of the temporary law and the passage of the permanent legislation that is pending in the Committee on Government Operations and Facilities and the Committee on Judiciary and Public Safety. The underlying legislation amends the Human Rights Act of 1977 to clarify the Attorney General's authority to prosecute certain civil rights violations and remedies the Attorney General can obtain in those cases. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and with that, I move the declaration.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. We have the Declaration before us. Is there discussion? We'll have a roll call. Let me just remind members the cadence here is that we do a roll call on the Declaration. If the Declaration is approved unanimously, then I'll do a voice vote on the underlying measure. This is PR 24-975. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen votes yes. Councilmember Bonds?
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds votes yes. Councilmember Che?
Yes.
Councilmember Che votes yes. Councilmember Gray is absent. Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson votes yes. Councilmember Louis George?
Yes.
Councilmember Louis George votes yes. Councilmember McDuffie?
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie votes yes. Chairman Mendelson?
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes yes. Councilmember Nadeau?
Yes.
Councilmember Nadeau votes yes. Councilmember Pinto?
Yes.
Councilmember Pinto votes yes. Councilmember Silverman?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverman votes yes. Councilmember Robert White?
Yes.
Councilmember Robert White votes yes. And Councilmember Trayon White?
Yes.
Councilmember Trayon White votes yes. Mr. Chairman, there are 12 yeses and one absent.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. The Declaration is approved unanimously. We have the underlying bill, Bill 24-1042. Councilmember Allen?
They move, Mr. Chairman?
Is there discussion? I will do a voice vote on this. All those in, this is on Bill 24-1042. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? How the ayes have, Madam Secretary, I don't see or hear any no votes. Do you agree?
Agreed, Mr. Chairman.
The bill is approved unanimously. The next measure is protecting security sensitive dashboard data emergency declaration resolution of 2022, PR 24-973. Councilmember Robert White?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This emergency legislation is necessary to specify what information the Department of General Services or DGS may withhold from new public facing work order system that we put in place in order to safeguard campus security. Public school principals, students, and families have been calling for increased transparency into campus maintenance issues. And I've been working to deliver that transparency throughout my time as Chair of the committee that oversees DGS. Mr. Chairman, last October, you led us in unanimously passing the Protecting Our Children Emergency Amendment Act of 2021, which directed DGS to post school heating and air conditioning work order information online. This year, my committee and I led the council in passing and funding a Budget Support Act subtitle called "The Government Space Maintenance and Repair Transparency," or GOV.Smart Dashboard Amendment Act. The GOV.Smart law says all public school work orders must be posted as of the start of this current fiscal year, and all parks and recreation facility work orders must be posted next fiscal year. As a result, an expanded version of the online work order transparency system went live this month. This is a big step forward in helping school communities understand the state of their schools and track DGS's progress fixing issues. Right now, despite the law's statement that all work orders must be posted, DGS is withholding certain information from the dashboard, such as problems with exterior door locks. DGS leadership and I agree that this general approach is necessary because putting that kind of information out on the internet could embolden someone to try and enter a school with a known security vulnerability and cause harm. Today's legislation will help clarify what information DGS is allowed to withhold from the newly expanded dashboard. It will also direct DGS to send the information they withhold to the relevant council committee chairs if work orders go unresolved for 45 days. When we get to the underlying bill, I'll move an amendment that reflects further negotiations my team and I have had with DGS since I introduced this legislation on Thursday to ensure that the agency has the time it needs for administration of these new provisions. I move PR 24-973, the Protecting Security Sensitive Dashboard Data Emergency Declaration Resolution of 2022.
Thank you, Councilmember White. Uh, is there discussion on the declaration? Uh, the vote will be on PR twenty-four dash nine seven three. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Bonds.
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds votes yes. Councilmember Che.
Yes.
Councilmember Che votes yes. Councilmember Gray is absent. Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson votes yes. Councilmember Louis George.
Yes.
Councilmember Louis George votes yes. Councilmember McDuffie.
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie votes yes. Chairman Mendelson.
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes yes. Councilmember Nadeau.
Yes.
Councilmember Nadeau votes yes. Councilmember Pinto.
Yes.
Councilmember Pinto votes yes. Councilmember Silverman.
Yes.
Councilmember Silverman votes yes. Councilmember Robert White.
Yes.
Councilmember Robert White votes yes. Councilmember Trayon White.
Yes.
Councilmember Trayon White votes yes. And Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Allen votes yes. Mr. Chairman, there are twelve yeses and one absent.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. The declaration is approved unanimously. We have the underlying bill, Bill twenty-four dash one zero three nine. And the agenda indicates that there'll be an amendment as well. Councilmember White.
Uh, so moved, Mr. Chairman. Um, can I offer the amendment now?
Yes, please.
Thank you. This amendment makes changes to the timelines and the proposed emergency and temporary legislation at the request of DGS to ensure the agency has adequate time to review work orders and notify the council. It reflects a compromised workout between my office and DGS to ensure DGS, uh, has adequate time to determine whether certain work orders are security-sensitive and to provide required notices to the council. We intend to continue to engage the department on these issues to ensure we have reached the appropriate balance of security, transparency, and administrability prior to the introduction of the permanent version of this bill. Uh, so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilmember White. We have the amendment before us. I think I'll treat this the same way as the last one, which is if there's no objection, it will be accepted.
Chairman, I can ask a question.
Yes, Councilmember Louis George.
Thanks. Um, I understand DGS asked for the thirty-day council reporting window to be extended to forty-five days, uh, to gi- give the agency the time they need to pull together the work order report information for us, but can you say more about what we are expecting to be in each of these reports? Are we expecting the information to be more involved than what would otherwise be included on a dashboard? Because I'm just struggling to understand what is so difficult for DGS about sharing information in a more timely fashion. I'm worried that this is a way for the agency to continue to, like, withhold crucial information about the scope of security maintenance issues and the needs in our public facilities. Um, so I just want to understand more. I- if we're giving them more time, are we going to get more details about some of the facilities issues we are facing?
Councilmember?
Uh, thank you for, uh, the, the question. So the, the extension from thirty to forty-five days reflects a, a good faith effort to work with the agency, uh, as we, uh, pass the emergency and work on the permanent legislation. I, I want information as quickly as possible. We have pushed the agency significantly, uh, on this. We did work with them to, to compromise. Uh, we have not defined other than the fact that they have to report the work orders. We, we have not, uh, had conversations with the agency about what will be in it. Uh, so if you have thoughts about what's not in the current work order system that would be helpful to you, uh, let us know, and we'll, we'll work through that for the permanent.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further on the amendment? Uh, by a voice vote, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? The amendment is approved unanimously. Uh, further on the bill as amended. Uh, by voice vote, this is on Bill twenty-four dash one zero three nine as amended. All those in favor say aye.
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 Are there any no votes? Madam Secretary, I don't see or hear any no votes. Do you agree?
Agreed, Mr. Chairman.
Bill's approved unanimously. The next measure before us is Attorney General Transition Emergency Declaration Resolution of two thousand and twenty-two, PR twenty-four dash nine seven seven. This is being moved by both myself and Councilmember Allen. I'll speak briefly and then, uh, turn to Councilmember Allen if he wants to say anything. Uh, this legislation, in a sense, is resurrected from two thousand and fourteen, the last time there was a change in who was occupying the position of one of our, um, major offices. Uh, this legislation, uh, will ensure an orderly transfer of the duties and responsibilities of the Attorney General, because we know there will be a new Attorney General, and, uh, enables the Attorney General-elect to have reasonable access to facilities, personnel services, and other resources and services prior to assuming the office of Attorney General. This emergency legislation authorizes the current Attorney General to provide space, services, et cetera, to the Attorney General-elect for necessary transition activities starting November ninth, two thousand and twenty-two through January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. I move the declaration. Councilmember Allen, do you want to say anything?
Uh, I'll just add briefly. First off, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, for working with me on this and appreciate you moving this. Um, just, I'd also note that one of the things I think is important here, uh, obviously has a reporting requirement as well to make sure there's accountability uh, for the council-approved funds, just made to the council CFO, so I think this is a uh, very appropriate, necessary thing as we think about our transition, uh, for this, but we also have the type of accountability and transparency requirements that I think would be uh, just a hallmark of good government as we help this transition. So, uh, with that, I certainly encourage my colleagues to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Is there discussion on the declaration? Uh, we will have a roll call vote. Uh, this is on PR twenty-four dash nine seven seven. Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Che.
Yes.
Member Che votes yes. Councilmember Gray is absent. Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Member Henderson votes yes. Councilmember Louis George.
Yes.
Councilmember Louis George votes yes. Councilmember McDuffie.
Yes.
Member McDuffie votes yes. Chairman Mendelson.
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes yes. Councilmember Nadeau.
Yes.
Member Nadeau votes yes. Councilmember Pinto.
Yes.
Member Pinto votes yes. Councilmember Silverman.
Yes.
Councilmember Silverman votes yes. Councilmember Robert White.
Yes.
Member Robert White votes yes. Councilmember Trayon White.
Yes.
Councilmember Trayon White votes yes. Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Allen votes yes. And Councilmember Bonds.
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds votes yes. Mr. Chairman, there are twelve yeses and one absent.
I'm sorry, Madam Secretary. That was, uh, did you say it was twelve to nothing?
Twelve to one.
No, uh, one absent, twelve nothing, with one absent.
There we go. Yes.
Thank you.
One absent.
The declaration is approved unanimously. We have the underlying bill, so moved, uh, and my staff gave me a oral amendment to strike, on line fifty-seven, to strike the phrase, quote, "and that the reprogramming of those funds has been approved by the council," unquote. And the rationale is that reprogrammings of less than five hundred thousand dollars do not require council approval, and that this, um, was caught after the measure had been filed. So again, the oral amendment is to, on line fifty-seven, strike the phrase, quote, "and that the reprogramming of those funds has been approved by the council," unquote. Does general counsel have that?
Yes, Chairman, I do.
Are there, is there any objection to the amendment? There's no objection, so the amendment is accepted. We have the bill as amended. Uh, is there any further discussion? By voice vote, all those in favor, Bill twenty-four dash one zero five as amended, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? The, um, bill's approved. The next measure is PR twenty-four dash nine seven six, River Rock Court Designation Emergency Declaration Resolution of two thousand and twenty-two. Councilmember Allen, you want to move this?
I will very quickly, too. Mr. Chairman, moments ago, we took the second vote on the permanent version of this measure. As you know, there are households, uh, currently living in this alley. What the emergency would allow is for those residents to begin the process right away to get urgently needed addresses for delivery, for safety reasons. Uh, because this legislation won't be effective for quite some time after it's passed and then sent to Congress for review. Uh, I'm moving this emergency measure so that we can get that ball rolling now. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I move the declaration.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. We have the declaration before us. Is there discussion? We'll have a roll call vote on this, PR twenty-four dash nine seven six. Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Member Henderson votes yes. Councilmember Louis George.
Yes.
Councilmember Louis George votes yes. Councilmember McDuffie.
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie votes yes. Chairman Mendelson.
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes yes. Councilmember Nadeau.
Yes.
Member Nadeau votes yes. Councilmember Pinto.
Yes.
Member Pinto votes yes. Councilmember Silverman.
Yes.
Councilmember Silverman votes yes. Councilmember Robert White.
Yes.
Member Robert White votes yes. Councilmember Trayon White.
Yes.
Councilmember Trayon White votes yes. Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Allen votes yes. Councilmember Bonds.
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds votes yes. Councilmember Che.
Yes.
Che votes yes. And Councilmember Gray is absent. Mr. Chairman, there are twelve yeses and one absent.
The, the declaration is approved unanimously. We have the underlying bill, Bill tw- uh, twenty-four dash one zero four four. Mr. Allen?
They move, Mr. Chair.
Is there discussion? Uh, by a voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Madam Secretary, I think I forgot this on the last one, uh, but on this one, I don't see or hear any no votes. Do you agree?
Agreed, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, the bill's approved unanimously. The next, uh, measure is River East at Grandview Condominium Property Tax Exemption Emergency Declaration Resolution of two thousand and twenty-two. PR twenty-four dash nine seven eight. I'm moving this together with Councilmember Trayon White. I'm going to read from the notice. Uh, last August, meeting two thousand and twenty-one, engineers issued a letter to homeowners at River East at Grandview Condominiums advising them to vacate the premises due to uninhabitable conditions based on significant structural issues. This is the property that many people refer to as Talbot Street in southeast. Subsequently, uh, the, uh, ex- engineers determined that families in approximately thirty of the forty-six units condominium units should move out. Subsequently, homeowners, uh, vacated their homes on a temporary basis. However, over a year later, the Department of Buildings and DHCD and the Condominium Association are still working with soil and structural experts to determine the best path forward. DHCD recently extended rental assistance for another year to the residents. The district government has employed multiple assistance programs in response to the displacement of these homeowners, including exemption from property taxes related to the Talbot Street property under the district's lower-income homeownership exemption program. The property tax exemptions obtained under the program have expired or will soon expire, and there is no indication that the displaced homeowners of the River East at Grandview Condominiums will be able to return to the property in the near future. In order to financially protect these displaced homeowners, it's desirable to approve emergency legislation, this emergency legislation, to temporarily continue the tax exemption for the properties here unable to use. And I would say unable to use, uh, while we, we, meaning the government and the Condominium Association, figure out the best path forward. The legislation, if I remember correctly, because I don't have it right in front of me, would extend the exemption uh, for a year or until the homeowners are able to return whichever occurs sooner. I move the declaration. Let me ask Councilmember White if he wants to say anything.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Um, I think this is beginning to address, uh, the deeper issue of the property. These residents are the homeowners in which most are first-time homeowners here in Washington, DC. Most are DC resident, original DC residents. Um, and to no fault of their own, the, the, uh, property, uh, has become uninhabitable. And so we've worked with DHCD, uh, Councilmember Bonds, your office, to help relieve some of their tax buries, and so we, uh, extended it for at least a year. Uh, we hope to come back, uh, figure out some more solutions to help these residents not lose their, their wealth uh, by letting this property go downhill. And so thank you, Chairman, um, for your partnering me on this, and look forward to working with Councilmember Anita Bonds to further figure out how we can help these residents not lose their property and their equity and wealth in their homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Is there further discussion?
Councilmember Bonds.
Um, thank, thank you very much. Um, I just wanted to add to this scenario, which has been horrific for the families and really for our city. Um, the fact that we are going all out to make sure that these families are made whole. And, um, Councilmember White and I agree that one of the biggest burdens that these families continue to have, and that is to continue to pay a mortgage on properties that they cannot um, occupy. And so we'll be moving in that direction. Um, I've already had some conversations with, um, the, um, Housing Department. Um, they are aware, and we're trying to move in that direction to um, alleviate these families of any, uh, undue burden so that they can move forward and become homeowners in this city anew. So I just wanted that to be put on the record.
Thank you, Councilmember Bonds. There's no further discussion. The vote is on PR twenty-four dash nine seven eight. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Louis George.
Yes.
Councilmember Louis George votes yes. Councilmember McDuffie.
Yes.
Member McDuffie votes yes. Chairman Mendelson.
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes yes. Councilmember Nadeau.
Yes.
Councilmember Nadeau votes yes. Councilmember Pinto.
Yes.
Member Pinto votes yes. Councilmember Silverman.
Yes.
Member Silverman votes yes. Councilmember Robert White.
Yes.
Member Robert White votes yes. Councilmember Trayon White.
Yes.
Councilmember Trayon White votes yes. Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Allen votes yes. Councilmember Bonds.
Yes.
Bonds votes yes. Councilmember Che.
Yes.
Councilmember Che votes yes. Councilmember Gray is absent. Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson votes yes. Mr. Chairman, there are twelve yeses and one absent.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. The declaration is approved unanimously. We have the underlying bill. So moved. Is there discussion? Uh, by a voice vote, this is Bill twenty-four dash one zero four six. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Madam Secretary, I don't see or hear any no votes. Do you agree?
Agreed, Mr. Chairman.
Bill's approved unanimously. The next measure is PR twenty-four dash nine eighty, Housing Authority Accountability Emergency Declaration Resolution of two thousand and twenty-two. Councilmember Silverman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, what is happening at the DC Housing Authority is the very definition of an emergency. The authority's job is to provide safe, sanitary, and dignified housing for our low-income families. Um, and it is to make decisions about housing authority properties that will provide deeply affordable housing uh, to those at very low income. So for years, residents have been testifying before the authority and at times before this council saying that the authority isn't doing its job. And increasingly, it seems the authority is more focused on market rate, economic development opportunities than creating that deeply affordable housing. The scathing HUD report put all of this in plain sight. We need to address this with urgency, and we need to start at the top and make sure that the people who manage and make decisions for the authority know what they're doing. So that is why I am glad, um, that so many of my colleagues, twelve of us, and the Attorney General have joined together in introducing this emergency legislation. We need permanent legislation to truly fix these issues, and I will be introducing that bill soon. For, uh, for now, however, I am asking colleagues to tackle three urgent reforms. Number one, training requirements for the board and its executive director. Second, transparency in properties and finances and operations. Third, consumer protection clarification. It's clear from the HUD report that the executive director and board need more training. About how housing authorities work, their programs, and basic federal and local requirements. While that report gives the housing authority six months to address the training gaps, the bill before us today sets earlier deadlines for completing training. And a penalty for board members who failed to do so. The HUD report also had a highlighted major errors in procurement, rent calculations, and even which units are vacant or occupied. Since district funds are keeping the authority solvent. We at the council need to know what we are getting with. The appropriation of our, your taxpayer dollars. When the council votes to give fifty million dollars to the housing authority to address its capital needs, we need to hear that they used it. For what we appropriated it for, to stop the rat infestations and mold. That people are calling our council offices about. The data we are asking for will help us make sure district funds that are going to the authority. Are being used for these purposes. Mr. Chairman, can I have one more minute?
Uh, there's no objection? Please.
Thank you so much. Um, so we need to make sure we know where the funds we are appropriating are going, and we need to make sure that it's not failing. Uh, the authority simply out of federal trouble, but instead actually helping residents live in dignified homes. Finally, I want to thank the Attorney General and his office for bringing, um, to our attention. That the authority has claimed that it is not subject to consumer protection laws. Since twenty nineteen, our consumer protection has been clear that landlord tenant issues are subject to the law. I don't see how DCHA would think it's exempt, but this bill spells out. Um, that it is not. It, I mean, maybe you can think of it a bit as a belt and suspenders approach. I, I'll just say, I think there's a strong case to say that DCHA was already covered, but we're making sure that it is. So I ask my colleagues to continue to support this emergency declaration and the underlying bill. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Silverman. And I want to note, I believe, even though you're listed on the agenda, I believe most of the members have co-introduced. This legislation.
That is correct.
Uh, so we have the declaration before us. Is there discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilmember Bonds.
Thank you very much. Um, I want to thank, um, really and truly thank you, and of course, I want to extend special thanks to. Councilmember Silverman and to the AG for putting today's legislation in place so quickly. I, like most of us who read the assessment, were saddened and dismayed by its contents, and we know we've got to fix this and we've got to fix it now. All of us, the council, the Board of Commissioners, um, the mayor, and the executive team at the agency. Must work closely together to address the problems facing the authority, many that have existed for decades. Particularly the aging housing units and diminishing funds to address the need. The October HUD assessment goes well beyond maintenance and repair of uninhabitable units topics. That have been the cornerstone of our traditional performance and oversight questions with the authority. The issues outlined in this report demand. Oversight beyond the annual council performance and budget oversight hearings. In fact. We must carefully track the housing authority's progress in implementing the changes required by the HUD report and conduct. Regular council hearings to make sure that the authority is on track to make the necessary changes further. I believe that we will need to do all that we can to help the authority respond to the assessment by November twenty nine. And these responses will help us determine what further legislative fixes may be needed to get the authority back on track. It's so important that we do so because safe, secure, and stable housing is a human right that we all deserve. By putting such safeguards in place through today's legislation, it will ensure that the authority is doing. All that is required to provide just that. This may require reevaluating many aspects of the authority's governance, operations, procurement. And including the use of both district and federal funds, as my colleague just mentioned. This emergency legislation is an important first step towards establishing greater accountability. It places new reporting requirements in place that we have needed, and as Chair of the Council's Housing Committee. Our goal is to utilize these new reports to improve the governance, to improve outcomes for our public housing residents. Most importantly, and our voucher recipients. And I want to stress further that more extensive oversight and reform may be necessary. The HUD report, along with these reporting requirements, should be a guide for permanent comprehensive legislation. To improve the safety of our public housing, the transparency of the operations at the authority and procurement. And the effective delivery of services to our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bonds. Is there further discussion on the declaration? Councilmember Robert White and Councilmember Nadeau, is that a hand? Uh, after, after Mr. White.
Uh, Councilwoman Pinto and I hands her up to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Silverman, and the Attorney General for drafting and introducing this bill. What this most recent HUD, uh, report showed us is how much work we have to do to improve the conditions of public housing. This report indicated that we have problems with procurement, with reporting, with maintenance, with governance. We have problems across this. Agency. What is also clear from this report is that the status quo will not move us in a better direction. And if the district doesn't move in a better direction, then we will see ourselves in a receivership. The district has to take this report seriously. The next step is not a good one for the district. So I really appreciate, uh, Councilmember Silverman taking the lead on addressing long-term fixes. I think we could have to continue to look at what we do in the short term to give confidence to residents who live in public housing first. To give confidence to the public and to this council, and to give confidence to HUD, because if we don't do those things. We are in trouble, and our residents who are depending on the housing authority to be effective are in trouble. Again, thank you, Councilmember Silverman. I, I look forward to. Uh, voting in favor of this bill.
Thank you, Councilmember White, Councilmember Nadeau, and then Councilmember, uh, Denise Lewis George.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you to Councilmember Silverman for swiftly putting together this piece of legislation. Um, and for proactively working to increase council's oversight capabilities over the housing authority. As a former member of the Housing Committee and, um, current Chair of the Human Services Committee, where I have. Um, joint oversight of the housing authority in relationship to vouchers. Um, I'm regularly in contact with the leadership of the housing authority. Many of these problems have been known for a long time. I think the HUD report surfaces very little in the way of new information, but it does provide us with an opportunity. After conversations I've had recently with the housing authority, it does seem that many necessary items are in the process of being addressed. They have six months to move forward on a corrective action plan and negotiation with HUD, and I think it's appropriate for that work to be accompanied by. Enhanced transparency to the council. There's a long road ahead toward us having a healthy housing authority. And we, as a council, need to be aggressively moving things in the right direction. Current and future residents of DC Housing Authority properties cannot and should not wait for a bureaucracy to repair itself. In order to live in safe and dignified housing. I will add that HUD is the oversight body of our housing authorities. Or has, has in many ways abdicated some of its responsibility, having only just done this report after years and years. Of a lack of oversight on their part, as well as. Very little funding towards what the mandates are here that we need to implement in the District of Columbia. So I hope, as we do our best to work together to repair our local housing authority. We can also join together to put pressure on HUD to better support the agency, both financially and through oversight as well. Thank you, and I look forward to voting for this measure.
Thank you, Councilmember Nadeau. Councilmember Louis George, followed by Councilmember Pinto.
Thank you, Chairman. I want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Silverman, for her leadership on this emergency measure today. Uh, the HUD report issued the other week confirmed what public housing residents have been saying for years. Uh, conditions are abysmal, residents are neglected, um, and management is failing. I visited a public housing building for seniors in my ward over the summer, where only six of the twenty two units were presently occupied. Six out of the twenty two units. I'm not going to sugarcoat what the tenants share with me. They believe that the city is simply waiting out these residents to die off, so the building can be moved out of the public stock. And that sentiment is shared by many public housing residents across the district. Stop for a moment and think about the de- to the degree to which we're failing these residents. The only explanation that makes sense to them is that their city wants them out. DC's pattern of inaction and disinvestment when it comes to public housing has been devastating for neighbors who depend on public housing. But it's also been devastating to every DC resident at risk of displacement or homelessness, who needs an affordable, dignified, and safe place to live. While two thousand housing units sit vacant or in disrepair. And the federal government is not blameless here. Years of federal disinvestment in housing, uh, programs has fueled the deterioration of the district's public housing stock. And prevented us from keeping up with the need for housing vouchers, and we have to name that as well. So, uh, we have a crisis on our hands for years. We've all known it. Um, and now i- is our time to act, and that starts with a full accounting of our spending. Real-time reporting on unit vacancy and repairs, and making sure that the leadership of the housing authority is fully trained to oversee. A public housing agency. But let's also be clear with the public and with ourselves that we cannot stop here. The conditions in our public housing facilities. And the failures outlined in the HUD report demand systemic changes and relentless oversight to bring meaningful and lasting change. Our job will not be done until public housing resi- residents can come to us and tell us that they see the difference in their day-to-day lives. I'm grateful for this emergency legislation as an important first step, and I'm eager to work with my colleagues on the Housing Committee to strengthen our oversight. And right the ship through permanent legislation. Thank you, and I look forward to voting yes on this legislation.
Thank you, Councilmember Louis George. Councilmember Pinto, followed by Councilmember McDuffie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. District residents deserve to have habitable and dignified places to live and a housing authority that is responsive, responsible, and well-managed. The report released by the US Department of Housing and Urban Development assessing the DC Housing Authority. Outlines the really extraordinary deficiencies and failures in nearly every aspect of DCHA's mission and leadership. The failures identified in this report have been ongoing. In some cases for many years, as is the case with the decades-long housing waitlist, worst in the nation unit occupancy rate. Public safety issues and lack of transparency in contracting, among other issues. I want to thank Councilmember Silverman for your leadership on this issue and for introducing this amendment today. This legislation. Legislation, excuse me. This legislation will require much-needed training for DCHA leadership across several key topics. Mandate transparency through required monthly reporting on areas of concern and deficiency. And ensure that DCHA is being held to the same standard as other landlords in the district when it comes to consumer protection. These are important and useful steps, but we have a long way to go in riding this ship. I've spoken to Councilmember Bonds, and I know she shares. Uh, my concern that we need to have a hearing on this report. Director Donald has had the last fourteen months to develop a plan and to address the inadequacies in our public housing. And unfortunately, has failed to do so effectively. There has been a steady decrease in the occupancy rate at DCHA, including over the last year. The failure to house residents in available housing units is a direct cause of displacement and homelessness of district residents. And the ongoing deterioration of our public housing stock is a de facto dismemberment of this critical social safety net. In addition to this failure to provide decent, safe, and secure housing, DCHA's programmatic and administrative mismanagement and opaque. Financial reporting to the board has led to an increasingly dire financial situation. DCHA needs to establish administrative and financial management systems that more clearly meet the mandate of its mission. The agency must also evaluate to what extent new talent is needed to properly and effectively fulfill its programmatic and administrative functions. Further, the need for commissioners with extensive real estate experience is highlighted by the extensive nature of the failings of this agency. DCHA needs to develop and share with the council and HUD its comprehensive strategy to turn around the direction of this agency. And I'll work with my colleagues here on the council to weigh all of our legislative options to ensure that DCHA can effectively carry out its mission. I look forward to the upcoming hearings to discuss this issue more in detail, because we know we need to see, just twenty more seconds, Mr. Chairman.
Without objection.
We need to see major systems and outcome improvements from DCHA in the coming weeks and months. To address what is one of our city's most pressing challenges, access to safe and affordable housing. So thank you very much again, Councilmember Silverman, for introducing this bill. I think it's clear that not only serious changes are made, but. We all, myself included, uh, need to do more to make sure that some of these reforms are not, um, put to the, the side. And really prioritized. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pinto. Councilmember McDuffie, followed by Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I agree with Councilmember Pinto that this is one of the city's most pressing challenges when it comes to housing affordability. And the affordability crisis that we're experiencing today. And I agree with the rest of my colleagues who have weighed in on this measure. I think we all know DC Housing Authority provides housing for some of the district's most. Vulnerable residents, and the fact that many of those residents continue to lack safe and quality housing with no end in sight is deeply disturbing. And frankly, unacceptable. It's further vexing that in a city with thousands of people experiencing homelessness. And housing insecurity, uh, we're now, uh, the home to the lowest occupancy rate of any large public housing authority in the country. And this directly contributes to DCA's, uh, downward financial trend. Uh, the HUD assessment really echoes what. Me and my team, uh, on my staff have seen in our own walkthroughs of public housing in Ward Five. Uh, in places like Montana Terrace and other places like Lincoln Road Apartments. Residents are not only concerned about the neglect and the deterioration of physical conditions as evidenced by mold and growth and persistence of pests. Uh, but also the lack of transparency on rat conversions in those same developments. Uh, oh, we all know that, uh, as I mentioned. The housing affordability is one of the district's major challenges, but there's really no excuse for DCHA's inadequate management of. Uh, housing programs and its consistent noncompliance with longstanding HUD rules and regulations. But let's be clear, this is not a problem that was caused by any one person, and it's not a problem, frankly, that can be solved by any one person. Uh, the conditions are abhorrent, and the council needs to do everything in our po- power possible. To ensure DCHA leadership turns the agency around. That's the management leadership, the executive director, the board, and everybody included. Uh, today's, uh, emergency legislation is going to help address some of the immediate needs identified by HUD. But it doesn't, uh, go far enough to do everything that's necessary. Uh, and the underlying issues that concern the health and safety of public housing units. To truly address those issues, we do need to lay the groundwork for DCHA to truly reach a state of good repair. And vastly improve occupancy for residents in need. Uh, I'm gonna work with Councilmember Bonds and, and everybody else who's demonstrated, I think, a serious interest in this issue of the council. Uh, I think we need to include, uh, a roundtable, uh, with the Chief Financial Officer that I will plan to hold. Uh, to brief the public on DCHA's long-term capital needs and facility condition assessments. It's gonna help DCHA effectively implement corrective actions, and it's gonna make future district investments in DCHA more impactful and commit us all. To drastically improving housing conditions for current and future public housing residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDuffie. Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, uh, this weekend, I was visiting with a lo- with several Ward Six constituents in one of our public housing sites. And as we walked around. Most of the buildings didn't have doors. Didn't have doors. Um. Didn't have doors. Um, residents talked about the mice, uh, that ran through their apartments. I talked with one resident who. Has duct taped their kitchen cabinets to try to help keep the mice from coming into the kitchen. We saw mold, falling and crumbling ceilings and walls, walk through counting the number of vacant apartments throughout. Um, I talked to the one neighbor who took two years to get a smoke detector installed in her apartment. Um, I think the HUD report is damning. I do appreciate my colleagues, though, that also noted that HUD does not get to uh be free and clear of their responsibility as well. Uh, and I hope that we're all kind of keep hammering away on that. And yes, we didn't, it didn't happen overnight uh that we find ourselves here, but we are here. It is our responsibility now to act now. Um, and I'm very grateful, Councilmember Silverman, for putting this legislation forward because it is the step that is necessary now, and there will be many more steps to come. Uh, but this is a very important step to take. Um, I talked to those residents a couple of years ago. Um, Mr. Chairman, you and I worked with Events D C. I think it was about fifteen million dollars. We cut out of Events D C. We put it to D C Housing Authority and said, all right, we want to see some improvements. I haven't found a single person who thinks they saw fifteen million dollars worth of improvements in public housing, uh, be that in Ward Six or anywhere else. Um, I appreciate that it sounds like there's some hearings that are coming. I think that's necessary. Um, again, Councilmember Silverman, thank you for this legislation because it is the urgent and necessary step that we've got to take today as well as what we then outline those next steps uh to get us where we got to go. And I really am glad to hear so much uh consensus, I think, uh, around recognizing the urgency and uh of where we are and and the steps that are taken here. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, and uh very strongly support, although I think it's going to be unanimous, uh, support for this legislation.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Trayon White.
Thank you. Uh, first, I want to thank uh my council colleague, Alyssa Silverman, um, and those members who joined on. Uh, I guess for me, in the last, I guess, two decades, I did extensive work in public housing communities all over the district. Um, and this eyesight, it doesn't seem to have gotten any better. I think in the last ten years, we are now on our third director. I'm starting with, I believe, Adrian Toddman. Um, now on our third director now. Uh, as I mentioned, uh, when you go into these properties, the the amount of deplorable and dilapidated conditions is inhumane. Um, and I've visited uh so many housing communities with O A G, uh, with D C R A, uh, and they get a slap on the wrist, uh, even to the point where the department, the D C Attorney General had to file a lawsuit against these property owners. Um, as a result, a few months ago, I did a sleep-in around Potomac Gardens just to see and feel what everyday residents are feeling every day. And it's scary, um, not just hearing the number of gunshots outside to hear the mice scratching, scratching inside the walls for hours. Um, just the plumbing issues when you flush and just water leaking from one apartment to the next. Um, and what I saw in a few hours, people are living in every day. And we, as a, as a council, as a branch of government, even executive, have a a duty to ensure that residents are living in healthy living conditions. And to my colleagues' uh comments, HUD is not off the hook. Um, I've sent emails and letters to HUD um to little to no response outside of a general email response. And it's our hope that we push all of our government agencies, both local and federal, to ensure that, you know, the conditions get better and a number of vacant units. It's disheartening when we have so many individuals calling my office every day, calling councilmembers' offices, trying to get a place to live for their families, stuck in the streets. Uh, then we got this removal of tents throughout the district. Um, we just have to do better. Um, bad things happen when good people do nothing. There are a lot of good people in this district that want to do something. This is a one step in the right direction to do something about these deplorable living conditions with our public housing properties. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember White. Councilmember Henderson.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank uh Councilmember Silverman for putting forth um this measure. I'm not on the Housing Committee, but I've gone to several of the hearings and have had conversations with the head of D C H A um since my time on the council, concerned not just about the vacancy situation, but also was trying to raise the alarm about some of the mold uh situations that we were hearing from residents um and feeling frustrated, frankly, the about the issues that we were having with some other agencies that's pertaining to private apartments as a um for mold enforcement. And so um I appreciate that the HUD report uh shed some light on some issues that residents have been talking about for years. Um, I wa- just want to reiterate, um, you know, I recognize that the agency is going to need to respond to HUD, but I I wanted these reports to be made public because I felt that people needed to know that progress was being made. Um, and also to respond to some of these allegations. And I didn't feel that um waiting six months was enough time. And frankly, I think that um, I think someone mentioned something about hearings. I'm interested in when we are going to have those. Um, and I feel like they should be regular um and not just twice a year um to discuss all the various issues, the waitlist, et cetera. And so um I look forward to supporting this today um and providing whatever support the authority needs or it feels it needs in terms of getting back on track. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Further, uh, I'll just add this. Uh, sometimes people think that by keeping quiet on something means that I don't care about it or not supportive. Uh, a- absolutely to the contrary here. Uh, I'm very disturbed by the um the findings of the HUD report. Um, I usually don't speak on these things because it's clear to me that this is going to pass, and I don't know that I need to make the arguments for it. But I will say this, uh, a majority of the members have spoken, and they've spoken on this because the concern of council members, I would say the concern of the council, is quite serious with regard to the state of affairs with public housing. To me, the most um uh, the uh most serious of the concerns raised by HUD is that there are over, more than one in four units are vacant. We have a affordable housing crisis in the city. Our own public housing, more than one in four of the units are vacant. Um, and the report goes on with difficulties with renting the units. That is, uh, lack of coordination and management, plus the maintenance conditions as well. So the amount of time that we're spending here discussing something that's going to be passed unanimously, it reflects uh how concerned council is. Uh, if there's no further discussion, we have the declaration, Councilmember Chair.
Just want to note something that's um an affliction throughout the government. And that is lack of good leadership in many positions where it's really, really needed. And the executive director's response to Councilmember Silverman's legislation quoting reactive, overly burdensome, and unreasonable. Really? What we need is good leadership, and we don't have it. So I would just say, as with my colleagues, thank you so much, Councilmember Silverman, because maybe, maybe we'll get it. Thank you.
There's nothing further. We have the declaration before us. The vote will be on P R twenty-four dash nine eighty. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Councilmember McDuffie.
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie votes yes. Chairman Mendelson.
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes yes. Councilmember Nadeau.
Yes.
Councilmember Nadeau votes yes. Councilmember Pinto.
Yes.
Member Pinto votes yes. Councilmember Silverman.
Yes.
Silverman votes yes. Councilmember Robert White.
Yes.
Member Robert White votes yes. Councilmember Trayon White.
Yes.
Member Trayon White votes yes. Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Member Allen votes yes. Councilmember Bonds.
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds votes yes. Councilmember.
Yes.
Member Che votes yes. Councilmember Gray is absent. Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Member Henderson votes yes. And Councilmember Lewis George.
Yes.
Member Lewis George votes yes. Mr. Chairman, there are twelve yeses and one absent.
The declaration is approved unanimously. We have the underlying bill is um, uh, Councilmember Silverman.
Yes, at this time, I move the underlying bill, Mr. Chairman.
Is there discussion? Uh, by a voice vote, the vote will be on Bill twenty-four dash one zero four nine. Uh, by a voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Are there any no votes? Madam Secretary, I don't see or hear any no votes. Do you agree?
Agreed, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, the bill's approved unanimously. The next item on the agenda is sign regulations, emergency declaration resolution of twenty-twenty-two, P R twenty-four dash nine seven two. So moved. I have a uh have to figure out where I am here. Uh, I will explain this in a moment, but let me say procedurally, there is linked on the agenda an amendment nature of a substitute that's to the bill itself, and that was circulated yesterday before before twelve A M, twelve P M. Uh, but I also have an amendment that I circulated this morning to the declaration. I believe that's the only. No, and I have an amendment that was circulated uh yesterday. No, I have an amendment that was circulated uh the declaration this morning and another amendment that was circulated later this morning to the Amendment Act. So those are available to members. Let me move the declaration, explain this. Uh, this legislation is being introduced at the request of the mayor. However, I can uh vouch that this legislation has been worked on very closely between the city administrator's office, the attorney general, our general counsel's office. This legislation would, among other things, ratify and adopt certain sign regulations previously issued by the executive, issued by the constructive construction codes coordinating board and the city administrator. The bill would also clarify the rulemaking process for sign regulations and clarify the prohibition on off-premises advertising. That's in a section of the municipal regulations. In August of this year, the District of Columbia Court of Appeals held that regulation of outdoor signs has to be affirmatively approved by the council. These earlier regulations had not been affirmatively approved by the council. They had been passively approved. The Court of Appeals held that the emergency rules adopted in recent years uh by the city administrator uh were invalid because they had not been affirmatively. The council had not acted affirmatively through the passage of a resolution to approve the rules. The emergency bill before us would adopt and give retroactive effect to the relevant rules promulgated by the Construction Codes Coordinating Board and the city administrator and provide further clarification on the mayor's rulemaking authority with respect to signs under the Construction Codes Act. I am moving a uh, an amendment to the declaration, and that was circulated at ten fifty this morning. It's largely technical, but rather than just have general counsel do it, uh, I thought that it should be uh in the record here. Uh, I'm sort of looking at it instead of saying, for example, in the long title, uh, sign regulation is previously issued by the Construction Codes Coordinating Board. It says issued by the chairperson of the Construction Codes Coordinating Board and so forth. So I move the amendment. Is there discussion, or if there's no objection, uh, they'll be deemed, the amendment will be deemed as accepted? Not hearing any objections, so the amendment's accepted. We have the declaration before us as amended. There any further discussion? Madam Secretary, would you call the roll? The vote is on um P R twenty-four dash nine seven two.
Chairman Mendelson.
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes yes. Councilmember Nadeau.
Yes.
Councilmember Nadeau votes yes. Councilmember Pinto.
Yes.
Member Pinto votes yes. Councilmember Silverman.
Yes.
Silverman votes yes. Councilmember Robert White.
Yes.
Member Robert White votes yes. Councilmember Trayon White.
Yes.
Councilmember Trayon White votes yes. Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Member Allen votes yes. Councilmember Bonds.
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Che.
Yes.
Member Che votes yes. Councilmember Gray is absent. Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Member Henderson votes yes. Councilmember Lewis George.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis George votes yes. Councilmember McDuffie.
Yes.
Member McDuffie votes yes. Mr. Chairman, there are twelve yeses and one absent.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. The declaration as amended is approved unanimously. The underlying measure, Bill twenty-four dash one zero three six, sign regulations, emergency amendment act of twenty-twenty-two, so moved. I circulated an amendment nature of a substitute yesterday. The amendment nature of a substitute, among other things, specifically identifies each of the sign regulations issued from twenty-fourteen onwards that this legislation ratifies and adopts. It specifies that each of the rules adopted, ratified, and incorporated by reference apply retroactively to the date that the applicable notice of the emergency or final rulemaking was issued. It also specifies that the rules continue in effect from the date unless otherwise superseded. The amendment nature of a substitute authorizes the mayor to issue additional rulemakings under the Construction Codes Approval and Amendments Act of nineteen eighty-six. And it makes technical amendments to conform with drafting conventions. I move the amendment nature of a substitute. Is there discussion? Uh, by a voice vote, all those in uh favor of the amendment nature of a substitute say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I don't see or hear any no votes. The amendment nature of a substitute is approved. I'm now going to move an amendment that was circulated this morning at eleven thirty-two. And it adds a new subsection C to read as follows. No criminal penalties may be imposed for an act or omission that predated the effective date of the signed regulations, emergency amendment act of twenty-twenty-two if that act or omission constitutes a violation of law as a result of the retroactive applicability of a rule ratified and adopted in subsection A of this section. This amendment makes clear that no criminal liability may be imposed for an act or omission that predated the effective date of the signed regulations, emergency amendment act of twenty-twenty-two, that is what's before us right now, if that act or omission constitutes a violation of a law due to the retroactive applicability. Oh, it's just to clarify a a point of law with regard to the retroactivity. I move this amendment, and I think I'll treat this as if there's no objection, it will be accepted. Is there any objection? I'm not hearing any objection. Oh, the amendment is accepted. Just to be clear or to confuse everyone's, I moved the bill. I moved the amendment nature of a substitute was approved. I've now moved this amendment, which has been approved. We have the bill as amended before us. Is there discussion? I think by voice vote, since the declaration was approved unanimously, the vote is on Bill twenty-four dash one zero three six as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Madam Secretary, I don't see or hear any no votes. Do you agree?
Agreed, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, the bill as amended is approved unanimously. Give me just a second. Uh, next before us are the um the managed care organization or M C O contracts. And I'm going to, uh, let me say, circulated notice with Councilmember Robert White, and these are at the request of the mayor. I'm going to move together uh P R twenty-four dash nine eighty-five, P R twenty-four dash nine eighty-three, and P R nine twenty-four dash nine eighty-one. I will state the titles. Contract number C W nine 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 two seven with AmeriHealth Caritas, District of Columbia, Inc., Emergency Declaration Resolution of twenty-twenty-two. Contract number C W nine 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 two nine with AmeriGroup, District of Columbia, Inc., Emergency Declaration Resolution of twenty-twenty-two. And contract number C W nine 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 three one with MedStar Family Choice, Inc., doing business as MedStar Family Choice, District of Columbia, Emergency Declaration Resolution of twenty-twenty-two. I put the three before us. I'll recognize Councilmember White, and then I'll speak for a moment.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I uh, I follow this procurement extremely closely for a year now. The council told the administration to go back and redo the procurement and follow the law. The council told the administration to go back and redo the procurement and follow the law. I worked very hard to make sure that exact thing happened. After a procurement and six appeals and nearly unprecedented legal scrutiny and political pressure. The administration made the final decision before us today. We all want to make sure we have the best care for residents. There is no daylight between us on this issue. None of us want to cast a vote for something that results in poor quality of care for our residents. That is the big looming concern over our discussion today. The question is, how do we as council members know who are the best companies to serve our residents? We have to realize we up here are not experts on healthcare or conducting procurements. That's why we are not the ones who should pick winners and losers. Past performance is reviewed both by the client agency and the Office of Contract and Procurement. The client agency reviews performance during a contract and sends that information to O C P. O C P reviews that information and other information on performance during the contracting process. Past performance was reviewed for these contracts, just like it is for every district contract. The council can't vouch for any of these bidders because we haven't done a full evaluation or a legal procurement process, nor will we do those things. So if we want the best possible care for residents, we should not insert ourselves into this process. The bottom line is that this procurement process has withstood almost unprecedented political scrutiny and protest. The procurement has been done twice now. The second time, according to guidance, we, the council issued, and the outcome was the same. My committee has followed this procurement process each step of the way, and if other council members had qualms with the process, they could have raised it at any point. If we involve the council in the procurement at this point, we're getting involved only because we don't like the outcome from the process that we prescribe. That's not how our procurement should work. The council should not pick winners and losers of contracts. The least objective and least fair way to get to the best care for residents is to have open season for lobbyists making one-sided arguments. Every single several years, the city rebids procurement contracts. Some bidders win and some bidders lose. Any entity that loses will say that they shouldn't have lost because they are the best and the others are the worst. Last year, four companies bid on the M C O contract. O C P determined that three of the four bidders were unresponsive. The mayor asked us to waive the law to approve the preferred contractors, but we told her no. To go back and redo this procurement and follow the law this time. These contracts are the result of that process. Oh. Little more time.
If there's no objection.
Care First doesn't like the result, so they're throwing the kitchen sink at us, using every argument they can muster. And the council's political environment is easy to make out a case against any of these providers. A quick Google search will yield lawsuits against all of them. That's why procurements are done through a process that is insulated from lobbying and keeps the field level for all bidders, and that's why there's an appeals process. Care First is trying to confuse and mislead. Care First told us that they had just a clerical error and that it was similar to errors that of other bidders. This is false. And the Contract Appeals Board assessed the merits of this claim and dismissed it. There is a public record on this subject. Care First told us that O C P didn't evaluate past performance. This is false. O C P did the same past performance review for each bidder and does the same past performance reviews for all procurements. There were sixty-five hundred procurements. Last fiscal year and never have we gotten a complaint about how the district evaluates past performance. All bidders had the same past performance review that looked at performance across the country and in D C. And every bidder on this contract has significant issues with past performance. And Care First is saying that AmeriGroup is a bad actor. But Care First just reached a ninety-five million dollar settlement with the district for raking in profits on their managed care contract. My point isn't that. Care First is bad. My point is that all these contractors have concerning issues in their records that we cannot sort through. In conclusion. The mayor has asked us to pass these contracts after the administration went through an arduous procurement process that the council asked them to engage in. I urge the council to consider whether the information we're getting, where that information we're getting is coming from when deciding how to cast your votes. All of our hearts are in the right place and we care about quality of care for constituents. But are we considering the facts on the ground, the reality of this procurement process, or are we giving credence to multi-million dollar lobbying campaigns? For the outcome of a major contract. I urge the council to pass these contracts that the mayor sent down. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Councilmember White. I may try to give a little bit of context. So members will recall that throughout two thousand and twenty-one. The council on a number of occasions passed legislation trying to push forward. Compliance by the executive with the procurement process and in particular decisions by the Contract Appeals Board. We were at sort of an impasse, and I don't mean by that that the both sides were, in my view, in legitimate positions. I think the council was right. But we were. We were stymied by the executive, and so we worked out a deal last September. I'm saying this just to create some context here. That. Basically, what we did was we overrode the Procurement Practices Act. We overrode the Contract Appeals Board, and we said that the incumbent M C O contracts could remain in effect for another roughly nine months. While a new procurement was pursued. What's before us now is the new procurement. And I also want to remind members that. Although the executive did complete the procurement process in the nine months. The executive took another four months before they got the contracts to us. The incumbents right now. Were incumbents who. In a sense, didn't deserve to be here, and it's only because we overrode the Procurement Practices Act a year ago and overrode the cab that they are here today. So that's just to give some context. I am a strong defender of the council's authority to approve contracts. Because I believe the process of requiring these contracts to come before us and the knowledge by the executives that you never know, they never know when we are going to scrutinize one of these contracts. Keeps them. More. How do I want to say adhering more closely to what the law requires? The reason why the council has contract review authority is because what we found, the council found. Was that without this review authority, the procurements. Were not good, and that's a polite way of describing what in the breakfast I referred to as corruption. That's decades ago. I'm a strong believer in having the approval process. Sometimes they screw up. But that does not mean that I believe that the council should weigh in or second guess. I don't. If we do not approve these contracts that are before us. There will be a new procurement. The current contracts, which, as I said, are in a sense not legitimately. Not legitimate will be extended for another twelve to eighteen months. How do I get to eighteen months? Because it's been roughly eighteen months since the last procurement. That we tried to. That we tried to deal with. The. Experience tells us if we go through a new procurement, if there's no objection another minute. If we go through a new procurement experience tells us that with contracts of this size. Having a new procurement will not douse controversy. There will be controversy again. The losing bidder will say that it was not right. We will be where we are now. I am comfortable with what's before us because there have been six appeals to the Contract Appeals Board. And in every one of those cases. The Contract Appeals Board upheld the procurement processes before us. I've asked Director Shutter, the chief procurement officer, to be here to answer questions. Under Rule three thirty-seven, that's permitted. And I'm saying that so that if members have questions about the scoring or about the competition or anything about the procurement process. He is here and he can answer those questions. Who's next? Councilmember Pinto.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I want to use my first couple of seconds here quoting from a statement from our colleague, Councilmember Vince Gray, who is unable to be here with us today. Who said, I am encouraging my council colleagues to vote no on the M C O declaration resolutions. So we ensure district residents are presented the best healthcare options through a transparent and error-free procurement process. I wanted that to be on the record on on his behalf as the chair of the Health Committee. But that is not my statement. My statement is that there has been a lot of discussion, as we all know, over the last few years especially. About the Medicaid care contracts and rightfully so, with nearly two hundred thousand patients affected. And over eight billion dollars of taxpayer money at stake. But I would not. But I would ask this body not to allow all the talking and discussion and back and forth to confuse the core issue that we're dealing with today. Are we all fully confident that these contracts were procured without error? And with all of the appropriate information taken into account? And that they are in the best interest of district residents? To be clear, there has still not been. A procurement process that assesses all four of the bidders head to head against one another. The first procurement led to the disqualification of three of the four bidders. After a series of cab rulings, one of the disqualified bidders was reinstated to the original procurement. And then the two remaining disqualified bidders competed in a subsequent procurement process. The contracts before us today come to us as a result of these two separate procurement processes. There is no clear public information about how these bids scored in relation to one another. Except for something I saw about an hour ago that was just released publicly. Demonstrating that the scores were likely to have been even. Between Care First and AmeriGroup. Which leads to more questions. I hear my colleague as the Chair of the Government Operations Committee. Councilmember Robert White oversees procurement, making the argument that we need to let the procurement stand. And that intervention by the legislative branch would be an overstep and set an inappropriate precedent. And I hear my colleague as the Chair of the Health Committee, Vince Gray, who oversees these providers. Say that there may have been foul play and that one of the providers has a checkered history in our city. But to both, I say, let's table this vote today and have a hearing or a roundtable. Perhaps a joint roundtable with the Government Operations Committee and the Health Committee. Alternatively, the Committee of the Whole could have a roundtable. I wish I had a committee to hold a roundtable, so I'm sorry to ask you to do this. But I I hope that you will, and that way many of us, can I have thirty more seconds?
Without objection.
That way, what many of us are hearing. From what some say, you know, lobbying is going on and calls and emails and. Visitors to our building and our offices can happen in a public setting where all of our questions can be answered. In in a format that the public is used to and the public deserves. What were the initial applications of the providers? What were the scores? Were all of the clerical errors found in the three providers who were kicked out of the first round substantively identical, or were they completely distinct? And if they were identical, why did the cab not find in the same way for each? And even more fundamentally. With so much at stake, is there a downside or a risk to tabling this vote and having a public conversation? About allegations and concerns that we're hearing for a few more weeks? There is no real emergency here because it's my understanding that our emergency contracts are in place through the beginning of next year. So let's do this the right way so that all of our colleagues can be confident that the contracts that we approve are valid and best for district residents. Mister Chairman, if you'll permit me, I'd like to make it make a motion and block. To postpone to a time certain. On pertaining to contract numbers, C W nine 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 two seven with AmeriHealth Caritas District Columbia. Nine 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 two nine with AmeriGroup District of Columbia and AmeriGroup. District of Columbia, and I would like to move to postpone these measures. To a certain time. Following. A hearing or a roundtable. On the contract process.
So your motion is to postpone to a time certain. What's the time certain?
The legislative meeting immediately following a hearing.
All right, there's a motion before us to postpone to legislative meeting following. I guess the next legislative meeting. I don't support that.
Mister Chairman, could I only try one second? Is it a motion to postpone until after the next legislative meeting? I thought you said after a hearing on this matter, which is not actually scheduled, and so it makes it. Motion to postpone indefinitely since we don't have any specificity about that.
I'm going to be a little more liberal or flexible in interpreting this unless there's objection. I'm going to construe that the. You don't mean literally a hearing which requires fifteen days notice in the register, that it could be a roundtable. I don't support this, but the but I did talk to you beforehand, Councilmember Pinto, so. Your suggestion, which again I don't support, is like a roundtable next week, which means then the November first meeting, so I will construe this as a motion to postpone till. The next legislative.
Okay, I raise it, Mister Chairman, because it determines whether it's debatable or not.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Well, and and this is debatable. And I'll say for the third time, I don't support this. And I would urge members not to support.
Mister Chairman, do you support this?
Councilmember Che, you need to pay attention. Further discussion on this? Councilmember White.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I I appreciate my my colleagues' motion and intention with the the hearing. What I want to raise is a concern. I shared a story with colleagues this morning. After seeing these Facebook ads, Care First has spent a lot of money on lobbying this contract. After seeing these Facebook ads and not having the volume on my computer. One day I turned the volume on in the evening to see what the the ad was saying, and there was an actor, an older black woman. Who said, Councilmember Robert White doesn't care about the healthcare for people. Now, my daughters, three and six, were standing next to me, and first they looked at me like, Dad, how could they say that about you? And then they looked again, and they said, Dad, in no way that's true, and it's not true. Here's the problem with that. Between today and that hearing, you're going to get ads with your name, saying that if you vote against this, you are unethical. You don't care about the healthcare for people. You're going to get lobbied. To get to an outcome of a contract that is supposed to be done without political influence. And so we're going to see a ramping up of a multi-million dollar lobbying campaign, and that will set the tone for the council. That the council will intervene. If we get lobbied enough, if people spend enough money, even if they lose a procurement. Even if they lose an appeal, multiple appeals, they can still spend money and lobby the council and get the outcome that they prefer. So it is not harmless in a procurement standpoint to to table this in order to to hold a hearing. And so I would caution us against it because once the council, if the council doesn't approve this contract. We have sent a very clear notice that we are a player in procurements and the winners and losers of procurements, and that we have then selected the outcome. So I want us to be abundantly careful about this because we set a precedent and we we won't be able to undo that precedent. So I won't be supporting the the motion to table. I very much encourage us. To to pass the contract that were sent to us and not get in the business of picking winners and losers.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. And I mentioned this earlier at the breakfast. The contract before us in total is approximately eight point eight billion dollars over five years. It is the largest contract, I would probably argue, that we have of any in the district government. And I was confused as to why we were considering this on emergency. When technically we have until November twenty-six in order to make a move here, and I already expressed this, and so I'll say this now, I thought that a hearing would have been worth it. Not necessarily for public witnesses, no offense, but this is about a process and a fact base. I've spent a lot of time on this. I'll give you guys, this is my prop. Because this this has been confusing. I had to like pull out markers and do colors. I read all of the cab rulings. I read the summaries for the contracts. I see Director Shutter on the Zoom. I've talked to Director Shutter twice. And I feel like if we are going to do this and everyone is going to feel confident in it, what is the risk of us taking another week? So that all colleagues can feel like their questions have been answered. Here. And so I'm going to. Who knows where the votes stand? I'm going to support Councilmember Pinto's motion on this, and and then we can go from there. Thank you.
Further on the motion. Councilmember Silverman.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. So I understand, I think we're all uneasy. And let me speak directly to the people who are here, um, who, who feel strongly for various reasons, uh, about this contract. You know, this is a lot of money. Our biggest contract in district government. And people's healthcare is at stake. So I just want everyone sitting in the chamber to know, and I think Councilmember Henderson demonstrated uh, with her visual that, that this body, but let me assure you, this body takes this seriously. But as Councilmember White said, council, we, we have a procurement process in place to remove it from political considerations. We want to make decisions based on criteria that's in the request for proposals. Now, um, this is the first time many of you have been to this chamber, and I've said many times, this procurement has been messed up from the beginning. But we have to come to a conclusion. And I want to assure, there was one young woman who came up to me and actually Councilmember Henderson spoke very movingly. We are not taking away healthcare providers. What we are doing here is deciding on three insurers. That will be our managed care insurers for this city. Councilmember, uh, to, to the motion. I really, I, I went back and watched a hearing we had August 2020, where we were gonna get all of our questions answered. Then there was another hearing when we were gonna get all of our questions answered, and here we are again. Nothing is gonna change in two weeks. Because Care First is gonna lobby with a lot of money and clearly a lot of people power to tell us that they should be the provider. AmeriGroup is gonna do the same thing. Apparently AmeriHealth is the only one that seems to have gotten through this unscathed. And MedStar will do the same thing as well. Uh, and I, I agree with what Councilmember White said. If we, if we, if we don't follow what ended up being the result of the CAB rulings and the procurement process, we are gonna be in this position with every single big contract in this city, where someone can just spend a lot of money to try to overturn the decision of OCP. So I am going to vote against, uh, the, uh, motion to postpone.
Thank you, Councilmember Silverman. Councilmember McDuffie?
Just to make sure, um, I'm clear, Mr. Chairman, what's pending is the motion to postpone?
Yes, to a time certain.
Okay, it, it's my understanding that these contracts have and always have in the past had a, a period of readiness review. And I wanted to ask, uh, uh, Councilmember Robert White as the Chair of the Committee, uh, what that means, uh, if this were to be postponed?
Uh, certainly, um, and, and I'll let Chief Shutter to, to say more on this if, if necessary. But, but there's a, a significant readiness, uh, review because this is not, there, there's about a third of our, uh, sort of insured people. Transferring them to new contracts is a long, uh, tedious process. It takes months, and they've told us that's every time we've gotten to the endpoint of these contracts. It's one of the reasons we've had to, uh, extend it. So postponing this could, uh, mean an extension of the current contracts, uh, which would be to benefit the, the current incumbents. Uh, but, but this is not a, a small or short process that they have to undergo uh, by the end of the year, and they can't even start that until we approve the, the contract. So, the Councilmember Duffy, I would say it's not harmless if we delay this.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Pinto, second round?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to briefly address a couple of the points that have been made. Um, first around this lobbying idea, I'm not sure when we are, decided to shy away from lobbying. We get lobbied all day, all night, in the building, at our homes. Um, we're constantly lobbied, and that's part of our job, is to respond to feedback from the public and make the best determination that we can on behalf of our constituents and on behalf of the city. And so I guess I'm not persuaded that additional lobbying is gonna happen. Um, notwithstanding, I'm really sorry about the advertisements that your daughter saw. That is, um, too far and, and not appropriate. Um, in terms of the point about the providers, I, I don't think that this is a reason not to move forward because otherwise we would have the same um, insurers for the rest of time. But it is my understanding, Councilmember Silverman, that a practical effect that, that may happen is that if the insurers are changed, um, not all insurers have the same providers in their network. And so I, I think it is true that over time, some, um, providers would be changed. Now, again, I don't think that's not a reason to move forward, but, um, to that concern. And then lastly, to this point that we've, um, I respect that you rewatched the hearing in August 2020. I should go back and do the same. But this issue is different. And so I don't want colleagues to think, oh, we've been through this process so many times and we've already dealt with this issue and we need to come to a conclusion. The issue that we're dealing with today around fairness of procurement and making sure that everything is transparent is different than the CBE issues that we were dealing with in August of 2020. And so that, that's the issue that I would like to have a hearing on and garner additional attention, discussion, and transparency around the issues that we see here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, we have the motion to postpone before us. Uh, all those in favor of the motion to postpone, say aye.
I have a roll call vote, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Secretary, would you call the roll? The vote is on, uh, the motion to postpone.
Sorry, I was waiting to connect. Councilmember Nadeau?
Yes.
Councilmember Nadeau votes yes. Councilmember Pinto?
Yes.
Councilmember Pinto votes yes. Councilmember Silverman?
No.
Councilmember Silverman votes no. Councilmember Robert White?
No.
Councilmember Robert White votes no. Councilmember Tran White?
No.
Councilmember Tran White votes no. Councilmember Allen?
No.
Councilmember Allen votes no. Councilmember Bonds?
No.
Councilmember Bonds votes no. Councilmember Che?
No.
Councilmember Che votes no. Councilmember Gray is absent. Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson votes yes. Councilmember Louis George?
Yes.
Councilmember Louis George votes yes. Councilmember McDuffie?
No.
Councilmember McDuffie votes no. Chairman Mendelson?
No.
Chairman Mendelson votes no. Mr. Chairman, there are four yeses, seven noes, and one absent.
Uh, Madam Secretary, say that again? There were four, seven, and one. That's 12.
Four yeses, eight, sorry, eight noes, and one absent.
Uh, the motion fails. The, uh, so we have the contracts before us. Nobody has yet volunteered to ask questions of Mr. Shutter, so I'll ask some questions of him until somebody else asks to ask questions. So, Mr. Shutter, uh, could you talk about, uh, if there's, if the, some have said that the scores were even? Uh, how could, how can you defend what's before us if the scores were even?
Uh, Chairman, the, this, the process and the, the contracts that are in front of the council is the, is following the legal process that the, the district, uh, went through. And the le, there is no legal basis for us to cancel the first solicitation. Uh, the district followed the, uh, what we were legally obliged to do.
And I, I don't feel like that completely answered the question, so. Are you able to publicly talk about the scores?
Uh, yes, the scores have been, have been shared, Chairman. The scores for both the first solicitation and the second solicitation.
Can you say anything more about the scores?
Uh, that the, from the first solicitation, uh, there were two awards, uh, AmeriHealth and AmeriGroup. In the second solicitation, uh, one award from MedStar. Realize, Chairman, that the, the reason for the second solicitation was responding to a, a rigid CAB ruling that forced us into the second solicitation, uh, due to our inability, unlike any other jurisdiction, uh, to be able to clarify, uh, proposals. So we are in a, we are in a situation with two solicitations. And the CAB also, uh, in, in their review, there was a, uh, a, a question on the comparison issue. The comparison issue was raised in a protest. The basis of the protest was that there are two solicitations and arguing that it prevented meaningful comparison. The CAB, uh, found that it was part of the solicitation process and it was proper. So that is the process that was followed. And the result of the scoring and the result of the awards is from the contracting officer following the district process. Again, as, has been mentioned, uh, this was a publicly noted, publicly, uh, posted solicitation with, uh, source selection criteria. A, a team evaluated those. Uh, a contracting officer worked with the, the Attorney General to ensure that we have legal sufficiency and that the, the process was followed here. And the contracts in front of you are a result of that process. This process has been reviewed uh, by the Contracts Appeals Board six times, including specifically the issue that you're bringing up, Chairman, and the comparison of, uh, contractors.
Thank you.
Yes, Chairman.
Councilmember Pinto?
Okay. Mr. Chairman? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Director Shutter, for being here. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think Councilwoman Bonds is waving a use. Maybe she could be on. So I guess first, after the first round, when AmeriHealth was selected and the other three were moved out, uh, before AmeriGroup was put back into the second round, how did the three remaining bidders' scores relate to one another?
The, there were two, there were two separate solicitations. This was not a head-to-head comparison, uh, that was within one solicitation. Uh, the, the, um, the comparison was, uh, and as I said, the comparison and the question was asked to the CAB on that comparison. So the district contracting officer followed what we were legally required to do. There is no basis to cancel the first solicitation. Uh, and the instructions in the second solicitation were also very clear to that point.
Okay, let me, I guess, then ask in a different way because as you just said, all four never competed head-to-head. Could you provide us with what the four scores were on an individualized basis?
Yes, the, uh, I, I can do that, Councilmember.
Could you do that now?
Uh, yes, in the first solicitation, there was, uh, MedStar with, uh, I'm sorry, the, the first solicitation, uh, has AmeriHealth at at 74.71 points. AmeriGroup at 66 points. The second solicitation has MedStar at 64 points, I'm sorry, MedStar at 74 points and Care First at 66 points. So the first solicitation was AmeriHealth at 74.71. AmeriGroup at 66. The second solicitation was, uh, MedStar at 74 and Care First at 66.
Okay, so in the evidence that we have available to us, Care First and AmeriGroup scored essentially the same.
Yes, the same, the same points. That's correct.
And is it true that the CAB included in their ruling that there was underscoring done for Care First?
Uh, the CAB, I don't know that, uh, answer, Councilwoman.
Okay, are you aware of anything that the CAB ruling said about these, um, but, uh, injustice given to Care First?
No, I'm not aware of an injustice to, uh, to Care First.
Okay, and can I ask one more question?
No objection.
So it's my understanding that in the event of a tie, if these contracts were being um, competed directly against one another, that the contracting officer would need to make a determination as to who would win and provided analysis as to why that decision was made, that would then be reviewed by the Office of the Attorney General?
That's correct.
Okay, and so given that you just said these contracts did not have an opportunity to compete head-to-head, don't you think that in an, in a different circumstance, there would, it would warrant, uh, an analysis to determine as to which of these insurers were replaced above the other if they were, had a tied score?
Councilmember, the, the process that the district followed was what we were legally obliged to do. Uh, this was not a head-to-head competition, as you, as you pointed out. It was within both solicitations. Uh, the review and the result of those solicitations or the contracts that are in front of you, uh, and the CAB has reviewed and opined on the very question that you're asking. And I'll state again that the board found it was part of the solicitation and it was proper. So there is no legal basis for us to do other than what we did, Councilwoman.
If I can jump in, the, um, the four companies, they all responded to the first solicitation. Is that correct?
That's correct, Chairman.
So theoretically, the four had an opportunity, maybe I shouldn't say theoretically, the four had an opportunity to compete head-to-head.
That's correct, Chairman.
And then through the contracting process, which I believe this was challenged and upheld by the CAB, uh, the, uh, some of the bidders were disqualified from the first, the first procurement.
That's correct, Chairman.
And that was challenged at the CAB and the CAB upheld what you did?
Correct. There was a, there was a protest at the CAB. The basis of the protest specifically was that there were two solicitations and the protest argued that it prevented meaningful comparison amongst the offerors. And that the protest found regarding that, or the CAB found, the Patrick's Appeals Board found in regarding that protest that it was part of the solicitation and proper what the contracting officer did. There is no legal basis for the officer to do other than what was done.
Anything further from members?
Uh, yes, Chairman, I had my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Bonds.
It's all right. That's okay. Um, Mr. Shutter, thank you for being here. Um, and we are all hoping that you can glean some understanding, um, to this, um, dilemma that we're in. As, um, a couple of my colleagues have indicated, we've been here before, it seems. Um, and with the same, um, healthcare providers, and that's no surprise because the contract is very generous and it's very necessary because we want to make sure that our Medicaid, um, customers are taken care of. And so you, you mentioned a couple of times, you said we were legally obliged to do what you did based on the CAB. So I have to ask, does the CAB supersede any authority that you have as the procurement office?
Well, the, the CAB, um, Councilmember is reviewing what actions the, the contracting officer took and advising on those actions. And as I mentioned, uh, that in this comparison issue, the CAB did rule on that and that the board found that it wasn't the solicitation, it was proper.
Okay, and so you're telling me then, if I'm hearing you right, that the CAB supersedes your authority? The CAB instructs you as to what you must do, even after you've gone through the procurement process and made some selection based on your, um, document that's in the community that, um, Um, vendors may respond to, is that correct?
Well, the, the cab is reviewing what we've done, uh, council member and will tell us if we're, we're. Correct or, or not correct, either through sustainment or. Uh, or denying the, the protest.
I, I see.
Councilor Bonds, if this helps, I think the cab is somewhat analogous to the Court of Appeals. I wouldn't say that the Court of Appeals supersedes the authority of the council. For example, but. If the council does something that, uh, didn't do it right, then the Court of Appeals will tell us we didn't do it right in. The cab, if, if, uh. You also contracting procurement doesn't do something right, then the cab can say you didn't do it right.
Um, thank you, Chairman, I, I kind of understood that. What I'm trying to get at. Is who's on first and who's on second here, let's just be clear. And it sounds like the decisions that the contracting office made were somehow. Um, erroneous or an error. And so you then were put in a position to, um, go back. Out with the instrument and accept another round of bids for the same services, am I correct?
No, the, the reason for the second, the reason for the second solicitation is the results of a. Previous rigid cab ruling. That prevents the contracting officer from clarifying subcontracting plans and proposals. And requires the contracting officer to throw out. That proposal rather than looking at it. So you're correct, there were four proposals submitted. Three of them, uh, were rejected. Uh, one of them was found sufficient. And one of them through the cab. Uh, the cab agreed with one of them not being thrown out. So there were two remaining in the first solicitation. And the second solicitation was open to all.
All right, so, um, uh, being a reasonable minded person, I would say that AmeriHealth. And MedStar had the highest sk- scores, am I correct, the seventy-four, seventy-four?
That's correct.
Okay, and so then where we are stuck is this tie where we have sixty-six, sixty-six. Uh, that seems to be the issue, but it's really that. You or the cab have determined that AmeriGroup. Should be the third entity that we contract with.
The, the cab determined that AmeriGroup's proposal in the first solicitation was responsive. And therefore the contracting officer then needed to review that proposal in the first solicitation.
All right, so in the second solicitation, Care First got the same score as AmeriGroup, and I'm trying to understand. Why the ruling is as it is today and. You know, eight billion dollars can certainly be divided four ways. As easily as it can be divided three ways or two ways.
Right, council member, that the. The district was very specific in our second solicitation. And how we would review the results of the first and the second solicitation and that. Uh, specifically that an offeror may be awarded. Under only one of the MCO RFPs, an offeror who submitted a proposal and is selected for award under the first RFP. May not be selected for award under the second RFP. So. And that language was in the second solicitation. Uh, we were required to do a second, uh, solicitation. And the results of. Uh, both of the solicitations are what is in front of the, the council today. These awards and the process. Uh, again, I would state that is, has been very publicly. Announced, fully understood by all parties. Uh, under. Significant scrutiny by attorneys and by the Office of the Attorney General. And has been reviewed by the cab. Uh, a number of times as well. And so the question that you're asking specifically was reviewed by the cab. And determined that it was proper.
Um, and I just have one, one, one final question, Chairman. So then if, if we. The council were to vote today, could we technically vote for a one year or a two year? Do we have to vote for the whole five years?
The, the award is a five-year base period.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Throw in a little bit more there, we don't have the ability to amend contracts, that's an executive function. So.
But it could be amended.
By the executive, not by us.
All right, so let's say.
Hold on, hold on a second, because I spoke a little quickly. I believe in this case because. The, um. The contracts before us are the result of a solicitation, the solicitation would have to allow for that kind of amendment, and I don't know that it did.
All right, so. It does not, in other words, it's absolute, five years.
That's correct.
Okay.
And there's a reason for this kind of rigidity, it's to prevent the kind of, um. Games that we've seen in the past, when I say in the past, I'm talking about many, many years ago. Um. Where things can just be changed and without a process that all the competitors can equally compete on. That's the reason for the rigidity. So. There are these rigid rules, the first solicitation, if I understand correctly. Not all the bidders met the rules and so they got thrown out. And, uh, what I heard Mr. Shutter say was. In the past, the contracting officer could negotiate with one or two of them, but then that got challenged before the cab, like that was unfair to the other bidders, so. The cab said you can't do that. So they got thrown out. So then there's the second solicitation and the terms of that solicitation have to be strictly adhered to. Or the losing bidders can claim that it was, they were, um, it was an unfair process, that, that's the reason for the rigid. Mr. Shutter, do I have that right?
That's correct, Chairman.
Um, Chairman and Mr. Shutter, thank you very much, but you know, I guess I'm looking at it long term and I'm looking at. Um, billions of dollars going out of the door and, um, going out of the door and I want to make sure that the service. Uh, rendered to the, the residents is top quality and when I look at these kinds of scores. I'm assuming it's based on one hundred, um, I do have concerns. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Allen.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, um, all right, Mr. Shutter, I'm, I'm. Going to come back to something I think my colleague was asking about that I want to try to understand as well, and I'll be honest that so far the answers are about. As clear as mud, uh. So I'd like to try to help understand this and I, I'll preface it by saying this. Um, as you, as you help explain this, um. I need your help not just to explain it to the council, but to the public as well, um, at this point. These contracts are being written about. In the press and the media, the general public is reading them, so. Regardless of the outcome, I think we got to figure out how to do our level best here to make sure we're explaining this well and answering people's questions, they have trust in us. So, um. You've walked through the, the two different solicitations, uh, in short, we got two groups that scored seventy-four-ish points. And we got two that tied at sixty-six. I gotta believe you didn't flip a coin. So I need to, to help explain. Why, if they both scored sixty-six, why was the decision to go with AmeriGroup over Care First? Someone had to make a choice.
Yeah, I understand.
And the decision making around it in as plain a way as possible, so that you're not just helping us understand it, but the public as well.
I understand your, your question, um, council member, so. This, so this requirement for the district. The district made a, a public announcement through a solicitation. Uh, describing what the district was looking for, for healthcare insurance companies, for MCOs. We were explicit in that solicitation. Of the source selection criteria and the process that. Uh, the contractors, that, that, that the providers would be reviewed with. We were also explicit with the requirements of the law in the district, uh, to submit. Um, items within their, their proposal, uh, including things like subcontracting plans. So there was also a, a, uh, a public notice period. There was a discussion with the providers, uh. Uh, while the solicitation was open to ensure if there are any questions that we would answer those questions. The, the district contracting officer. Um, received proposals, re- reviewed them. Uh, in the first round, three of the four proposals. Uh, were not, were, had to be thrown out and they were thrown out. Because of the rigid. Uh, ruling that I have mentioned before. That prevents the contracting officer from going back to a proposer. And saying, uh. What you sent here, uh. We need to clarify that if it is correct or not, for example, the, the, the numbers, uh, for your. Certified business enterprise and your subcontracting plan are incorrect. We did not have, the contracting officer no longer has that ability. Uh, to clarify and, and receive updated proposals where there are challenges. Therefore, the, the contract required. And the district's requirement was, uh, to have up to three. Uh, managed care organization contracts to support our beneficiaries. Therefore, with only one approved. The district, uh, was required then to, to put out a second solicitation. Realize also please, under district law, we cannot just cancel a solicitation, so if we cancel the first solicitation. The, uh, provider that, that responded appropriately. Uh, would have the grounds to protest as well. So that the laws surrounding the district and the regulations, which are very nuanced and, and. Substantial in the, in the district around contracting. Required that we. Uh, um, request a second, uh, solicitation. For the district to be able to get up to three. Uh. Managed care organization contracts. The solicitation, the second solicitation. Was very clear. That. Um. The first solicita- that we would award first on the first solicitation. And then secondly, award, uh, up to three in the second solicitation. There were a number of, of contract appeal board protests that were, that were, um, that were submitted. The results of those, uh, appeals and, and protests. Uh, led to the resulting contracts that have been sent to council.
Okay, Mr. Shutter.
Yes, sir.
Um, just because my time is ticking away and I want to try to be careful here, all right. So I want to make sure I under- I'm going to try to say back what I heard in a very short way, um. The first solicitation. The two entities that successfully went through that and got their score were.
AmeriGroup and AmeriHealth.
AmeriGroup, AmeriHealth, seventy-four point seven one and sixty-six.
That's correct.
As you were then looking for a third.
Correct.
You go back out with second solicitation, MedStar and Care First come back, seventy-four and sixty-six. So there's no coin toss, there's no direct head to head between those two sixty-sixes. Would it be accurate to say if Care First had scored a seventy-three? And MedStar had scored a seventy-four? You still would not have gone with Care First. Because in that second solicitation, you were only looking for one.
That isn't, that isn't accurate statement, uh, council member, and further to that. That point was the point of a protest. And that point was sustained, that the district was correct. In, uh, in their decisions, uh, doing just exactly what you said. And the scenario that you put, uh, that would be correct.
Okay, thank you, I, I was trying to drill down to that, that piece and then, uh, and I know my time is up, it's just Mr. Chairman, um. From, we, we have an end, you know, we have this contracting process that we are trying to keep, keep out of the politics of it. So your response to this is. These are the rules, and so these are the rules of the solicitations, um, and the process you followed upheld by. The CAB appeals and then reviews and decisions. And that's why you're putting this forward in the way that it is.
That's correct, we have, we have followed the laws and the regulations and worked very closely. With our program and with the AG. Um, to make sure that we've done, uh, the right. Uh, the right analysis and the right decisions here. And the results of these contracts are the result of the, the legal process that district followed.
Got it, okay, thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, I, I feel like. Speaking to the issue of the, the two scores being tied. It's a little bit like saying that. If you have. Two different sports games and their teams in the two different. Games that have a tides, that have the same score that they're tied. They're two different games, so you can't say that the teams, even though. Um, one basketball team in the, one basketball game had a score of sixty-six and the other basketball game had a score of sixty-six, that therefore they were tied. The two different games. And here there were two different procurements. And we could say, well, the, having the two different procurements led to us. You know, was, was wrong. Except that the cab upheld having the two different procurements. And a reason for the two different procurements was that. The bidders in the second procurement had lost, had been kicked out of the first procurement, they didn't do something right, in spite of the. The attorneys and the proposer makers and all the folks who have a lot of expertise, they didn't do something right, so they got thrown out of the first procurement. So there was a second procurement that was challenged, the cab upheld, having the two. Procurement, but even if you were to look at it as a tie, because it's not a tie. There, there's a process for resolving the tie. And it would be the contracting officer or it would be by the process, which in this case was two different procurements. Or it could be by us. And I vote that it's not by us. And actually, if we were to step in and say, well, no, we think one bidder with a score of sixty-six is better than the other bidder and we're disagreeing with you. We don't then actually get the other bidder because it's just going to mean a new procurement. We can't really resolve the cry, all we can, so you followed a process. If we step in, we're not actually going to resolve the tie, we're going to require a new procurement. I don't know if that helped anybody, but. It was meant to. Robert White says it didn't. Councilmember Lewis George.
Thank you, Chairman, um, and thank you to my colleague, um, Charles Allen, uh, for his line of question, that was very helpful. My only other question here, um, Director is. Uh, it seems that both were given the sixty-six in separate instances. What I would like to know. Is what? Without, I guess you have. Without going into too much detail, um, I guess. What was the sixty-six given to AmeriGroup for and what was the sixty-six given for Care First for? I'm thinking about patient outcomes here, right? So if someone was given a sixty-six because of poor past performance. Um, one of the groups got sixty-six for that and then another group got sixty-six because of sort of. Uh, uh, so I guess a less important reason, um. Then that would make a difference for patient outcome, so is there any way you can speak to the? The reason for the sixty-six, what I'm just trying to make sure is that. Uh, the sixty-sixes won't impact. Patient outcomes, like the reasonings for the sixty-sixes won't impact patient outcome in a negative way. Um, i- is there any way can you, you can speak to that, the sixty-six factors?
Yeah, there, there are. Uh, yes ma'am, there are, um, detailed source selection factors, uh. One of the factors that I believe you're talking about though is past performance and looking at the factors. Uh, for, uh, past performance, uh, both Care First and AmeriGroup both scored a three. On past performance.
Okay.
Councilmember Lewis George.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Henderson, did you have a question?
I did, um. Good afternoon, Director Shutter. A few hours ago, um, I wanted to ask about, um, since you're here in terms of. The definition of past performance in terms of what is looked at. Um, and I, I mentioned this earlier and, and for, um, the benefit of everyone else, the, the last. The last major contract I can remember. The last major contract I can remember, the council disapproving. Even though everybody says we should let the process be was Horizon in twenty fifteen. There were seven members of this current body who voted no to disapprove that contract. Which was around healthcare on um the Department of Corrections. And there was an issue there in terms of what is the definition of past performance because O C P? And I think, Director, you said that was your first week on the job. When you came to D C. But the contracting officer who wrote that summary. Had told the council that Horizon had had a satisfactory record of integrity. And business optics and that they were a good performer. And everybody knew that with a Google. That wasn't exactly accurate. In the contract summaries that you all sent over. With regard to. MedStar and even Care. With MedStar and and AmeriGroup. Both of them remarked that in the prior contracts with the district that. Both vendors had satisfied, or had, I think, something to the effect of satisfactory in terms of meeting the contract obligations. To what extent are past judgments and settlements? Considered? In the definition of past performance?
They're considered, uh, they're considered in two different areas. One is in the the past performance specifically that is outlined in the solicitation instructing. The offer wars to submit specific information around similar. Supporting similar. Organizations. In the nation. And that past performance is reviewed. Uh, so there is, there is, there's information in there. There's also, as we've discussed. Information both in the the summary of the of the proposal of. Uh, speaking to litigation, there's also. This specific question in submission from each of the offers on. The litigation that is that is proved that they have been involved in the last ten years. So past performance is looked at by the specifically in the criteria. In source selection and scored by a team there. Past performance is also looked at. And scrutinized is a matter of responsibility for the contractor for the district. And in that case. The bitter offer war submission has details of of any litigation that has taken place in in the last number of years. There is a review by the contracting officer and with the Attorney General. And. The. What was the timeline of of those cases? What was the result of them? What were the remediated remediate actions that that took place? There. And there is an official determination of responsibility by the contracting officer. That is written up and that is approved for legal sufficiency. By the by the Attorney General's office. So there is. A review of past performance in in two different areas of of a review.
Okay, um Councilmember Nadeau mentioned earlier. The um, I think they're quarterly reports in terms of. Outcomes and how the the plans and patients are performing under those plans. Director, and I obviously this was not included in this current procurement, but do you feel like? In the future, it would make sense for if we're going to evaluate. Health contracts that that information should be considered. Going forward.
There are, there are other things that can that can be considered as a matter of specific past performance in the comparison. But uh, as I mentioned, in looking at responsibility that. Those issues are taken into account and are considered by the contracting officer and the attorneys. Prior to determining that that contractor is a responsible contractor. So it is in fact reviewed and has been reviewed in this case.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, thank you, Director Shutter, um for. Being here today, but also for answering my questions over the last few days. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Um, I. Don't disappear, Mr. Shutter, but I think we can go back to debate. Is there further discussion on what's before us? House Member Nadeau.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to be voting no on these contracts today. In a situation like this. It's not enough to say that the executive complied with the law. So the council can't evaluate the merits of these contracts. There is a process that has to be followed, but the council is an intrinsic part of that process. Our review is as much a part of the procurement process as anything the Office of Contracts and Procurement does. Or the Contract Appeals Board does. And that's because following the process, crossing every I. And dotting every T. Sometimes leads to bad results. And that's why final accountability for those results rests with us. That's why what happens to our people on Medicaid rests with us. We are all accountable. And if we never actually exercised our contract review authority to deny contracts. The executive won't care that we have that authority. Will still get bad procurements. So I say, let's send this back. And um. Get better outcomes for our patients. Thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
The Councilmember, Councilmember Che.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I'd like to respond to to the notion about the council's role here. We have review of contracts and it's supposed to be a backstop against something plainly wrong, plainly. Irresponsible or even illegal so that we catch it. But we are not part of the process. We are not the second level for contracts to go through. That approach would make us. Part of the process. We are not part of the process. We are a backstop and a backstop owner. It has to be plainly. Unreasonable, plainly. Wrong, something that we have to catch as the final net, but we are not. Part of the contracting process as such. And so I'm going to be voting for this today. This has been, my head is spinning from all of the discussion here today, but also what we've taken up in the past. But let's be clear. This has gone through a proper process, even to the Contract Appeals Board. And it's now not, you know, the second appeal. To bring it to the council. That's not what we should be doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. There's no further discussion. Councilmember Allen.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I I appreciate this um and the debate. I will, I will admit that I. Bring a little of my own bias. Into this one. Before joining the council as staff, I I worked with healthcare providers in the district. And the AmeriGroup. At that time. Had problems, uh, to say the least. And. I know that the AmeriGroup of today says they're not the AmeriGroup of then, and there's different people and different leaders. But I I just kind of carry that with me a little bit. So I've been highly skeptical throughout this entire process. I do appreciate, though, the very healthy debate around this to try to help understand what the process actually looks like and where it ultimately lands. I take. Voting on our contracts very seriously. Uh, it is only a handful of times. That I have voted against a contract that's put in front of us. And typically, that's when I am. Looking at something where I believe it's a policy choice kind of wrapped into a contract. So take the. Horizon contract many years ago. Which would have partially privatized the jail. That to me was a policy choice wrapped in a contract and a policy choice I disagreed with. And so I voted against that. Take the food service contract with D C P S. My perspective, that was a policy choice wrapped up as a contract around where. We believe fresh nutritious food should go and how to deliver it. And I voted against that. I can vote against a contract when it's the policy. And what I've been struggling to hear here is. Where is this question around policy and where is this question about process? And as I continue to hear this and have heard through the process of O C P. Of the C A B appeals. I am left seeing a process. Perhaps even flawed, but a process, not a policy change. So I am of the opinion that at this point. I've got to make sure that we. Allow that process that we want O C P to follow and that we have the cab there for a reason. So I am not voting against these contracts. Um, I think this is a process question. And we want to keep uh the council out of the process. I have no problem, though, when it's a policy. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any further discussion?
Yes, Chiver.
Councilmember Trayon White.
Yes, thank you. Um, it's been intense discussions. I remember joining the council two thousand seventeen. Uh, there were a lot of discusses around. The. Medicare Medicare contract. Even then, it was appeals back and forth, counter similar to this process now. Uh, the council. Has a duty to ensure fair equitable process. The the cab or the Contract and Appeals Board has a mission to provide an impartial. Expedicious, inexpensive, and knowledgeable forum for hearing resolving contract disputes and protests. And. June of two thousand twenty-two. The opinion was. Redacted by the cab ruled by the district improperly. That the district improperly rejected AmeriGroup's proposal as a nonresponsible. For the reasons set forth herein. Uh consequently, the cab sustained the instant protest and ordered this to take corrective actions. Uh, one by rescinding the notice to AmeriGroup. That is proposal deemed nonresponsible and to eliminate from competition, as we heard in a discussion. By Mr. Sutter. Um, and fully evaluated AmeriGroup's proposal. Subcontracting plan incorporating and accepting the clarification information. Provided by the contractor. Uh, officer by D S L B D. New to me today was the actual numbers. And who scored what and when. That gave me further clarity on the process. And to to hear that, uh, I guess the analysis that the two didn't compete gave me. A greater, a greater. Ease. That, you know, it's our job just to. Vote on this based on the merits of what happened with the process. And I'm comfortable in supporting this today. Simply because I feel like, you know, it went through an appeal process, what, six appeals were filed? And we're still here today. So in the future. And solicitation five years from now, we probably will be here again. When you talk about, well. We, you'd be here in spirit, Mary. And it's eight, I think the contract is worth eight point eight billion dollars. And I'm and affecting over two hundred thousand residents. And so we take this very seriously. And some may feel that the residents are not going to get quality healthcare. I assure you that. As long as I'm a council member, I'll fight for equity, truth and justice. To ensure that we do all out, all that we can do to ensure residents are getting a quality healthcare service. Um, there's no break in services. And so today I'll be in favor of this contract. Oh, there it is. But I want to thank everyone who participated in this process in hopes that we are able to always. Create a platform for people to appeal and offer their opinions on especially matters over eight billion dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember White. Further discussion? As a member. Henderson.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and um. Even though I. Was in favor of Councilmember Pinto's proposal in terms of a hearing, I do appreciate you asking Director Shutter. To come today and that I think that was able to add some clarity for some of my colleagues. Like I said, I I spent a lot of time with this when I first joined the council. And. Frankly, it wasn't until I actually read, sat down and read the cab rulings that I realized. While it is being represented that everyone had the same issue from a clerical error that wasn't entirely accurate. In terms of process. And so. In many ways, um, the. The administrative law judges who reviewed this matter really had no choice in terms of their determination, I think, in some ways. But they also provided strong reasoning in terms of those. Public rulings which are which are public. And I kind of, I'm I'm easy about this, obviously, given the past record in terms of AmeriGroup. But one could argue the past record in terms of some of the other companies as well. There was one thing that was clear for me, though. I was not prepared to vote down all three contracts because at the end of the day. One company in particular didn't follow. Everything. They did it right. They didn't even have to go to the cab. Um, and it was time in terms of us moving forward on that. Um, Councilmember White. Trayon White um had mentioned in his comments around a fair equitable process, and I would add to that. The other part of our responsibility on the council side is vigorous oversight. I don't think I've, we have had a hearing in terms of just on Medicaid M C Os, just in general, in terms of. How they're doing, how they're performing, how they are um acting on behalf of D C residents. But that is something that we will absolutely be doing in the next council period. I don't know who, what, whatever the committee makeup will be. That is not something that I'm going to give up on because I think that when we wait. Until plans are falling apart, that is a disservice. To the residents where we have to keep moving people around. Um, and so with that, Mr. Chairman, um, I move to close debate. I'm sorry, I know that they're.
Uh, you're serious about that. There are only a couple more people who want to speak, I think.
Okay, I'll I'll take that off the table.
Okay, uh, so that's been withdrawn. Uh, further on this. Councilmember Louis George.
I'll be short. Um, I just want to note that I have long been a strong supporter of Medicare for all models. That remove for-profit health insurance insurers from the equation. I think this ongoing debacle of district companies undercutting one another, one another. Politicizing the process and potentially winning billion-dollar deals without meaningful. Evaluation has only strengthened my conviction in support of a single payer system, not only in the district, but in this country. But until that policy is won, uh, it is on us. You're in the district to get our Medicaid insurance systems right beyond all reasonable doubt. That providers, we are working with other providers that will put our patients first. And so I hope moving forward, as my colleague Christina Henderson has noted. That moving forward, that we do take the time to have hearings really on our Medicaid providers. Hearing more, not just hearing from our patients, not just during these votes, but hearing from our patients. Throughout. Um, so I I hope that that's something we can center as we move forward as a council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember. Robert White.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to be very brief. I I just want to thank my. Colleagues for their questions and and concerns. I I know where the questions and concerns come from. We are all trying to do. The right thing for residents in trying to keep the playing field level. So that we're always doing what is best and not what lobbying pushes us toward. I appreciate the questions and clarifications of how the procurement was done, including how past performance was evaluated, what issues cab ruled on. Just to recap, we we sent this back last year. The results are before us. Where there are indications of corruption or contract steering, that's appropriate for the council to to step in. Where we believe that the district government is ultimately spending too much for goods or services. That's appropriate for council to step in, as Councilmember Allen said, on policy issues. The the role of the council is not picking winners and losers in procurements, particularly after the conclusion of a process that we require. And that we did significant oversight on. That we didn't, if we didn't want someone to win, and we wanted someone else to win, we should have said that. We didn't because it would have been inappropriate. So we are here with the contracts that the mayor has submitted. And I I am going to vote in favor of those and and hope that we all will be doing so momentarily. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Councilmember. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll? The vote is on. P R twenty-four dash nine eighty-five, P R twenty-four dash nine eighty-three, and P R twenty-four dash nine eighty-one.
Councilmember Pinto. Councilmember Pinto votes no. Councilmember Silverman.
Yes.
Councilmember Silverman votes yes. Councilmember Robert White.
Yes.
Councilmember Robert White votes yes. Councilmember Trayon White.
Yes.
Councilmember Trayon White votes yes. Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Allen votes yes. Councilmember Bonds.
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds votes yes. Councilmember Che.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Che votes yes. Councilmember Gray is absent. Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson votes yes. Councilmember Louis George?
Yes.
Councilmember Louis George votes yes. Councilmember McDuffie?
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie votes yes. Chairman Mendelson?
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes yes. Councilmember Nadeau?
No.
Councilmember Nadeau votes no. Mr. Chairman, there are ten yeses, two nos, and one absent.
The declarations are approved. We have the underlying resolutions. That's PR twenty-four dash nine eighty-six, PR twenty-four dash nine eighty-four, and PR twenty-four dash nine eighty-two. I could give the titles, but I think I'll just leave it to what it says on the agenda. Councilmember White? Want to move them?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Other before us, is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, are you comfortable if we do this by voice vote?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, seeing or hearing no discussion on the three, the three contract approval resolutions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
No.
No.
I heard two no's. That would be Councilmember Pinto and Councilmember Nadeau. And of course, Councilmember Gray is absent. There were no other no votes. The decor, the, the contracts are approved. We will turn to first reading and vote on temporary legislation. If there's no objection, I will move all of these and block. That's the Attorney General's Civil Rights Enforcement Second Temporary Protecting Security Sensitive Dashboard Data Temporary River East to Granville Condominium Property Tax Exemption Temporary Housing Authority Accountability Temporary and Sign Regulations Temporary. And the temporary for the sign regulations, I believe the emergency had been amended, so the temporary will include those amendments, the same amendments. Madam General, Assistant General Counsel, is that clear enough?
Yes, it is.
And I don't believe there were amendments to the other emergencies. So the motion is to approve the five temporaries, including the amendments that had been made to the emergency. Is there discussion? I think I was clear. I moved these, these five. Hearing no discussion, Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Silverman?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverman votes yes. Councilmember Robert White?
Yes.
Councilmember Robert White votes yes. Councilmember Tryon White?
Yes.
Councilmember Tryon White votes yes. Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen votes yes. Councilmember Bonds?
Yes.
Councilmember Bonds votes yes. Councilmember Che?
Yes.
Councilmember Che votes yes. Councilmember Gray is absent. Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson votes yes. Councilmember Louis George? Councilmember Louis George? Councilmember McDuffie?
Yes.
Councilmember McDuffie votes yes. Chairman Mendelson?
Yes.
Chairman Mendelson votes yes. Councilmember Nadeau?
Yes.
Councilmember Nadeau votes yes. Councilmember Pinto?
Yes.
Councilmember Pinto votes yes. Mr. Chairman, there are eleven yeses and two absences.
The temporaries are approved unanimously on first reading. That's going to conclude the business for this meeting. The next the next meeting of the council is scheduled for November first, 2022. As I'd indicated earlier, there'll probably be an additional committee, the whole on that date. The time is five sixteen in the afternoon, and this meeting is adjourned.